To call to order the Village Board meeting for Tuesday, May 28th. Roll call, please.
President Kardowski.
Here.
Trustee Service.
Here.
Trustee Paul.
Here.
Trustee Zerbal.
Here.
Trustee Atkinson.
Here.
Trustee Krieger.
Here.
And Trustee Flukie.
Here.
Please stand for the pledge.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in and as well with liberty and justice for all.
And please remember all the men and women we have throughout the United States in uniform. Okay, I have no changes to the agenda. I need a motion to approve, please.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the agenda as presented. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Aye.
Action on the minutes of the open and close from April 23rd, 2024.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve those minutes. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Number six. Comments from the public must be limited to items not on the agenda. Must state your name and address. You're limited to five minutes. The board's role is to listen and not discuss the item. Personnel issues cannot be discussed nor individuals named, and the board is not able to take action at this meeting. Is there anybody either in the audience or online that would like to talk about anything not on the agenda? Okay, could you come up and state your name and address for the record, please?
Salute.
Chuck Famery, 1381 Glen Road, Ashwabanon. Chuck, I miss you.
Okay.
I read in the paper that there was going to be a reconstruction of Kimberly's Culver Pipe or the crossing where the conservancy goes across Kimberly. And I thought it was going to be on tonight's agenda, but I don't see that. That's why I'm here.
I believe that that was that maybe, Brian, last month? No? Oh, it is? Okay. It is on tonight.
I see Timber.
Kimberly. Kimberly. Timbers tonight, not Kimberly.
Timber.
Yeah, but in the paper it was Kimberly.
He's he Timber is tonight, but he is concerned about the Kimberly. Potentially a project for next year. Are we discussing that tonight? No, we are not, Chuck.
But no time soon. So that's good.
Okay.
That's what I wanted to know. Thank you.
Thank you, Chuck. Have a good night. Okay. Anything else? Anybody have anything to say that's not on the Village Board agenda? Okay, moving on. Number seven. Written communications or announcements. Seven A. Presentation and report on the NFL Draft experience from the Village staff. Okay. Joel.
Thank you, Madam President. Okay, so we wanted to provide the board with some information of the experiences we had while attending the NFL Draft in Detroit. If you forgot or unfamiliar, we did send a group of five individuals from the Village of Ashwabanon to Detroit for essentially a kind of a two-day visit to the draft area to kind of scope out and scout what gall goes into the draft and what that experience is going to be like for us here, not only in Ashwabanon, but obviously northeast Wisconsin. So with me on that particular trip was Public Safety Chief Brian Yule, Deputy Chief Nick Kozlosky, Public Works Director Brian Rickert, Community Development Director Aaron Schudy. So we arrived in Detroit on the Wednesday preceding the first day of the draft, stayed through the first full day on Thursday, and then came back on that Friday morning. So we did not have the full three-day experience, but we certainly experienced the buildup to the draft as well as the busiest day. So I'll kind of walk through what we should expect here in Ashwabanon and northeast Wisconsin. So again, just a reminder, the 2025 draft is going to be in April of next year, between April 24th and 26th. However, the impacts of the draft itself will be much greater than that. The buildup and the takedown of the draft will extend well beyond those three days of the draft. At the time of the bid for the draft, it was estimated that the overall statewide impact would be roughly $94 million in economic value. Based on the experiences that the state of Michigan had, as well as the city of Detroit, if we see the same type of numbers that they saw at our draft, that number will be shattered. 2023 draft was held in Kansas City. As a reference, they estimated about 312,000 fans attended that draft. And then if you paid attention to the news, they estimated that the fans in Detroit were well in advance of 700,000, so more than double than what was experienced in Kansas City. In addition to that, those numbers seem to continue to increase as well, so that it's more closer to 800,000. For us, just kind of as a reference, if you're not an NFL fan or maybe haven't paid much attention to the draft itself, it is a three-day event. So Thursday is the kickoff day of the draft, and that features what will be called the first round of the draft, and those are the highest prospects, if you will. So hopefully, the Packers are picking on the lower end of the first round. That means we did a good job the year before. If you pick first, like the Chicago Bears always do, that usually means that they didn't have as good of a season. So the first round is done on Thursday. That is the highest-attended day of the draft. So the most amount of people attending the draft are on that day. Friday, the second and third rounds occur, and then Saturday, fourth, fifth, and sixth rounds happen. Now, again, we weren't there on Saturday, but we've been told by other attendees that that's generally the highest family attendance. Now, with that being said, I would say all three days are generally family-friendly. We did see a number of families on Thursday during that first round, but by and large, it was mostly young adults, if you will, that were attending the draft. The draft itself has a draft campus area, and that campus area will be broken into two parts. The NFL Theater, which is basically what you see on TV, and then the NFL Experience is really where the activities and activation happens inside the campus that the NFL sponsors and puts together. The draft itself is a free-to-enter program, so you don't need to have a ticket, you don't have to pay anything to enter the draft. All that they ask that you do at this time, anyway, is to download an app that the NFL has called the One Pass. You register yourself as an attendee to the draft, and then that's the app that keeps you informed as to all the different activities that are happening in the draft. I suppose that they are using the app to track you as well, because they use that information to determine if the draft campus has reached capacity. And we did experience that on Thursday at about 6:00, 5:30, between 5:30 and 6:30 PM, the draft campus met the capacity requirements that the NFL and Homeland Security had established, and they basically shut down entry into the draft at that time. So they basically turned people away after that part, and the official draft itself on that Thursday night hadn't even begun yet. So it did reach capacity beforehand. There are high-security requirements. I would consider it very comparable to what you'd experience entering Lambeau Field on game day. So one of the things that will happen at the onset of the draft process is the buildup. And part of the buildup, or the largest aspect of the buildup, is to create the theater part of the campus, and that theater part will encompass a large temporary theater or stage area. So here you can see in the city of Detroit, they're beginning the construction process of that theater area. We've been told by Detroit officials, as well as individuals associated with the NFL, that that buildup could take about six, six to eight weeks, depending on the complexity of that construction. We'll talk about at the end as to where we anticipate that stage area to be, so you can kind of see where those impacts are. But even though the draft is only three days, anticipate at least six to eight weeks of pretty substantial impact to the general area of the campus for that buildup. This picture doesn't really give it much understanding of scale, but I personally think it's very similar to if you were to take the rest center, cut it in half, pick it up, and set it down, that's about the size of the theater. It's huge. We've been told by NFL officials that the stage in Detroit was the smallest stage that they had constructed for a draft, and to anticipate that that stage area would be much larger when it comes here to Green Bay. The next thing that you'll see as you go through the buildup process is the NFL coming in and adding a variety of different signage throughout the area to promote the draft. And so you'll see banners like this on light poles that the NFL will establish. These primarily are inside the draft campus, but you will begin to see some of these areas on the gateways coming into the campus areas as well. Generally speaking, it's promoting the draft, and certainly the NFL franchises that make up the league. In addition to that, now, we don't have many tall, high-rise buildings in the proposed draft campus area, but in Detroit, you can see many sponsors were placing banners on large, high-rise buildings to promote the draft, promote their enterprise, and then kind of be affiliated as part of that picturesque scene at the draft. In the campus area, so this kind of picture on the left-hand side, to give it kind of scale, if you were to take probably like four to six large billboard, billboards, and placard them on the side of the building, that's how many, how big that banner is. It was tremendously large. These banners, for the most part, were these vinyl kind of screen-type materials that are fastened to the buildings. But interestingly, the picture on the right, it appeared that this banner was actually painted on the building. So I'm not exactly sure what's going to happen after the draft is completed, as to whether that banner's going to be removed, or if it's going to be repainted with something different. I'm not exactly certain, but anticipate there will likely be these types of large banners somewhere within the draft campus, whether they're fastened to buildings or put on temporary structures. It is likely that this type of signage is going to be anticipated. Beyond that, as the campus builds out for that six-to-eight-week period, anticipate the area to be secured and locked down. And what that basically encompasses are these large, eight-foot-high kind of chain-link, if you will, fence panels that will be wrapped in banners that have signage both on the interior of those panels, as well as the exterior. Interior, obviously, it's promotional to the draft. Exterior, a lot of times, it's wayfinding signage as depicted here. In addition to that, all of that barrier fencing is going to be wrapped and barricaded with Jersey barrier. So there are Jersey barriers either on the outside, and that Jersey barrier are basically these concrete slabs that you see here, or on the interior side to prevent vehicular traffic from ramming through that secure fence area. And they have to meet Homeland Security requirements as far as placement is concerned to ensure that is safe. Here's just an image that shows you kind of the interior of the, actually, this is the exterior yet, so you can see it kind of, again, promotes the draft, promotes the franchises that make up the league, so on and so forth. This picture was interesting because this was the exterior of the draft campus, and immediately adjacent to that, next to the sidewalk, are businesses that are open for operation. So the road, in this particular case, on this stretch, had been closed for a week to two weeks, and yet these businesses still had to operate and survive even in this type of environment. The other thing that we found interesting is there is just a variety of telecommunications that, infrastructure that comes into place into the draft area. Much of this is temporary. They fix those telecommunication components and infrastructure to existing facilities like light poles, or they bring it into portable towers. So one of the things that the NFL will do to ensure that it is a secure environment is they will be bringing in thousands of cameras into the draft campus area that will both be permanently affixed to structures and will be left behind, or temporary infrastructure to provide that security within the draft campus. Now, all of that is generally wireless technology, and so they have secure wireless technology endpoints that come in and get installed throughout the entire area. So you'll start to see that infrastructure go up as part of the build-out. One of the things that the NFL has indicated that they'll do is what's called activation events, and those are both during the buildup of the draft, as well as during the draft and shortly thereafter. This particular image, this is, I believe, Drake May. He was one of the first-round draft picks, quarterback, so a high prospect, and he was being sponsored through Raising Cane's Restaurants. And so Raising Cane's had Drake come in, cook some chicken in their food truck, and then sign some autographs for fans as part of a meet-and-greet. So these types of activation areas do happen inside the draft campus, but they also happen outside the draft campus in surrounding communities. So in our particular case, you might see a prospect like Drake May sign autographs at, you know, some type of franchise restaurant in Ashwabanon, or in DePere, or in Bellevue. And so there will be that activation that happens not only in the campus, but also in the surrounding communities, that could present an opportunity for those communities and those businesses to take advantage. Now to talk a little bit more about the draft campus. As I mentioned, the overall campus in Detroit was broken into two components, the theater and the experience. Those are highlighted in that red boundary area, the theater being the yellow area and the experience being the blue area. Interestingly, when we were there, we were told that the experience and theater are all part of the campus, but as the activities begin and the draft commences on Thursday night, there is a possibility that the theater area could be closed off from the experience. So there was a capacity that the theater had, there was a capacity that the experience had, and at some point, those areas may be closed off to one another to ensure that they maintain that capacity threshold that they've established. In the theater area, you'll notice that in this particular image, you have the lighter yellow, and then you have the darker yellow areas. The lighter yellow areas are those areas in which the fans are participating in. The darker areas are within the secure campus, but generally, those are secured within the secure campus because they represent the theater, the backstage area, all the support infrastructure that's necessary to put on the theater experience. This is an image that we had taken. It probably is, I'm guessing, maybe 4:00 to 4:30 in the afternoon on that Thursday. So again, the festivities haven't really begun. You can see the size of the crowd that is making its way to that theater. Again, as I mentioned, that temporary stage is very large, so anticipate kind of a rush, think rush center. That's about as big as it's going to be. Takes about six weeks to build out. Within that theater area, there are what's called the VIP area, which I'll describe in a moment. There are areas that are set aside for individuals with disabilities, in particular wheelchair access, so that they have a visual of the theater. And then the area that you're seeing on this screen of these fans is what's considered general admission, if you will. These are the low-hanging fruit participants, if you will, not the VIPs. The key thing that we were told, and certainly something that we experienced, is that the draft itself is a TV production. As a participant at the draft, you should view yourself as an extra in a TV production. So there's not a whole lot of activities planned for you in the theater area. You're just there to make their TV show look good, and they do a good job of that. And you'll see that as we go through some of these other images about TV productions and production studios, so on and so forth. We already talked about those support areas being Prospect Room, the green room for a variety of celebrities and other figures, and then there's those backstage support areas. So here's an image from the stage itself, and so when you're looking out from the stage into the general admission crowd, and if you were to watch the draft on TV, you see all these crazy people dressed up in these crazy gear, supporting their teams, those are the VIPs. So you need to be invited by the clubs in order to be in that VIP area. Generally speaking, those are the super fans. So if you think about Lambeau Field, and think of the gentleman that wears the frozen Tundre Cheese head, he's a super fan. There are others like him that love to get dressed up and act crazy. Those are the folks they want in the front rows, because those are the ones that are going to get on TV, and they want that to look good for TV purposes. Beyond that, the VIP area is also invite-only by those clubs, so think of individuals that may have sponsored to bring the draft here, individuals that paid money for the local organizing committee to support the draft initiative itself. They would get an invite to that support area as well. So Mary does not have a ticket into the VIP area. I do not have a ticket into the VIP area. People should not text, email, or call asking for tickets to the VIP area. We are not important people enough to meet that. Unless we dress up as super fans, we're not getting in. Okay? Now, with that, there are times during the draft, maybe second, third round, fourth, fifth, and sixth round, where those super fans, those VIPs, aren't there. There is a capacity amount for that VIP. If you're up front enough in the general admission, and you want to come in for supporting a particular club, and there's space for you, they may invite you in. We did not experience that because there was just too many people there. One thing I'll also note is that this is a TV production. So there are booths inside the stage, right here on the right, and then there's a booth here on the left. One of the booths is likely ESPN, and that's where they do their full day-long or days-long coverage of the draft. The other one is the NFL Network. So when you're on the admissions, our general admission side, there are these large video boards that are up, and what they're doing is they are showing you the television show that is being produced in the studio behind the video board. So again, made-for-TV production. This is just an aerial image of the crowd. Again, this is probably late afternoon. I'm guessing somewhere between 2:00 and maybe 4:30 PM. And you can see the crowd, it got much busier after that. When they brought in their entertainment for the night, it certainly got busier, and then it kind of thinned out after the entertainment came in. The point that I want to bring here is just kind of showing this area. This is that dark yellow area that was in the map. These are the support areas. This is all VIP, food, beverage, and bathroom facilities, as well as other support areas. So the VIPs had their own special area that they could go to, and if you notice, it's kind of tucked off into the corner because they don't want it to show on TV. So everything's tucked off. General admission folks, they were tucked way in the back here, and I'll show a couple images of that, but again, bathroom, food, beverage, everything was tucked off to the side. And one of the comments that I think we all collectively shared is that there weren't simply enough beverage, food, or bathroom facilities within the campus to support the volume of people that they had, and so that's something that we will certainly ask the NFL for support on. The other thing I'll mention is that there's these TV studios back here, and so there was a lot of interaction between the TV shows that were being produced during the buildup of the draft. If you watch College Game Day, popular figure is Pat McAfee, so he was pretty active in getting the crowd engaged and entertained during commercial breaks, and so there was some activity that way. So again, here's TV studios. Again, they want you in the background, because the more people that they show, the more excitement that the production brings. They constructed a three-story temporary television studio, so this is that. So anticipate seeing these types of things coming into place as well into Green Bay. The kickoff of the draft itself generally brings in some type of local, well-known national artist. This happens to be Big Sean. He's a rapper, hip-hop artist from the Detroit area, so he performed for about 30 minutes and kind of got the crowd rallied around the draft itself. There were a lot of people that came to the theater area just to see Big Sean, and once his performance was done, they left. So they weren't NFL fans, they were more interested in seeing him perform. Again, a Detroit native, so there was a tie to the community. We do not know who that kickoff concert act will be. We had suggested maybe bringing in the Cougars, because they're, you know, the most well-known band in the area, but I don't think it's going to be that.
Glam Band.
The Glam Band, yep. For those of you that either like or dislike fireworks, there will be fireworks. So if you like them, great for you. If you dislike fireworks, be prepared. Generally speaking, at the end of every draft night, there is some type of firework display, either big or small, but there will likely be fireworks at the end of each night. This is just a quick image of the overall food and beverage area in the general admission. So this is it. You had a half a dozen to 10 individual food tents for tens of thousands of people. What we found interesting with this is that these vendors were certainly individual and unique. They were likely, let's say, a food truck vendor, or maybe a small restaurant local to Detroit, and they had their own food tent. But they're highly regulated by the NFL, so all the food prices, it was quite clear they were fixed. And when you made payment to the vendor, you got a receipt back from the NFL. So they likely paid the NFL, and the NFL contracted with these vendors to provide these food and beverage tents. This is all they had. All of us ate lunch at this on a Thursday, and then a few of us attempted to go over there for dinner when we were there, and the lines were 50, 60 deep for each vendor. All of us spent probably between $20 and $25 for a typical lunch meal at that vendor. So that kind of gives you an idea of what ticket prices are or food prices. Beverages, I would say, are very comparable to what you'd experience at a Packer game on game day. The bathrooms were unique. They did have the traditional portable toilets, but they also brought these flushable portable toilets. So if you're like my daughter, who does not like toilets that don't flush, this is for you. Interestingly, these are tied directly to the sanitary sewer system, and so they had banks of these at specific locations within the draft area, again, tucked off to the side so as not to be picked up on the television production that's being aired on TV. Now, moving on to the overall experience area, again, this is that blue area. This is really kind of the activation space, so this is where you have a variety of different activities. There are plenty of opportunities for photographs, so each NFL team is represented with a helmet, with kind of a statue to take selfies with. There are other engagement options or opportunities that some of us may be familiar with when the experience has come before, such as like 40-yard dash, vertical leap, some throwing competitions. We found it interesting, because there were two tents, one set up where you could actually see the Lombardi Trophy, one where you could see and kind of touch Super Bowl rings. Those are really popular for Detroit fans, because they've never experienced that before. So for us in Green Bay, that might not be that, might not be that big of a deal, so. So this is an image of the overall campus. This is early on. This does fill in throughout the day, and so there's tents, again, for those experience points. The other thing that happens in the NFL experience area are those meet-and-greet. So throughout the day, on the hour, there are different media personalities, NFL players, draft prospects that come into areas where you can meet, greet, get autographs, and be entertained with that. These are those statues that I was talking about. So again, every NFL team is represented. In Detroit, there were very, very long lines for the Detroit helmet, the Detroit statue. There is an individual Detroit Lions experience component within it. Lines were extremely long. So if you're a Packer fan, and your first exposure to Packers kind of regalia, if you will, is at the draft, you may want to come in advance and visit Lambeau before that, because it's, the lines will be extremely long. And throwing competitions, we did see Canada when we were there, so that was interesting. Then the other thing about the campus is this area called Woodward Avenue, or Draft Day in the D. So Woodward Avenue is kind of that main street of downtown Detroit. If you've not been there, think of boutique shops, restaurants, hotels, clubs. On the very far north end of this street is Comerica Park, where the Tigers play, and adjacent to that is Ford Field, where the Lions play. This entire stretch was over 2,000 feet, so comparable to, if you were to take, let's say, O'Naita Street from Lombardi Avenue down to Cormier Street, that entire length of street was closed and activated for draft day activities. And so this happened through that full three-day affair of Detroit. One thing we'll mention is when we got down to the draft on Thursday, we got there shortly before noon, entered the draft campus. The draft campus opens at noon. There isn't a whole lot of stuff going on inside the draft campus. There weren't a whole lot of people there. We were kind of joking in advance of the draft, boy, it just seems like there's not a whole lot going on. I wonder how well-attended this is going to be. And so when we were on the campus, we kind of felt that same way, and then we were advised that we should go out of the campus and view the Woodward Avenue area and get to what was called the red carpet for the prospects. And so when we did that, we were immediately greeted by tens of thousands of people, and it was an instant shocker to us by the mass volumes of people. So when you hear those stories of 700-plus thousand people in Detroit, they weren't all in the campus. They were everywhere in downtown Detroit. So this was put on through both the NFL and downtown Detroit partnership, which you would consider kind of like, kind of a bid district slash Chamber of Commerce. It encompassed not only Woodward Avenue, but there were seven parks throughout the downtown area that had different activities and events in it. And again, as I mentioned, about a mile of Woodward Avenue. It was a secure area outside of the campus, so it was closed to vehicular traffic. There were security checkpoints when you entered it, so it was interesting for us because we were in the campus, secure. We had to go through security. Immediately after exiting the campus, we had to go through security again to enter into the draft in the D experience. This wasn't completely managed and controlled by the NFL, so here is where there was opportunities for things like food trucks, retail shops, and boutiques. They were all open for business, and so there was an opportunity for that. So here's just an image of us going through. We exited the campus. We exited the campus, and immediately we were greeted with additional security, and we had to go through that as well. And as we entered in here, we had lines and lines of food trucks and other vendors within the area that were there to activate draft in the D. There was a variety of different art exhibits. So they had not only these kind of DET letters that you could draw and sign your name to. I'm not sure exactly where they're going with those afterwards. But there were also these cleats that were represented by each NFL team in which you could activate and participate on those as well. And again, every business along the stretch, if they wanted to be open, could be open. And so you see like Dunkin' Donuts was open. There's a Verizon store. And in that Verizon store, you can see this NFL draft canvas in the background. That was an activation area, so they had a prospect there for meet and greet, Verizon being a large sponsor of the NFL. And again, vendors, people everywhere, music, the whole nine yards. So what do we know about what's coming for the NFL draft and what is our focus? So right now, Discover Green Bay, along with the Green Bay Packers, are actively engaged with the NFL in doing the preliminary planning of the draft here. And we are a part of that process, albeit at this time somewhat limited. But as we continue to move along, we'll continue to get more and more engaged in that effort. So recognizing that we don't necessarily, at this present time, have a whole lot of activation and engagement with the NFL, we felt it was necessary for us internally to become more activated in planning and preparing for the draft. So we've created five internal committees of staff members. Different department heads are leading each of these groups, and we're beginning to ask the questions and plan and prepare for what Ashwabanon needs to focus on as we lead to that 25 draft. So the first group is a pre-planning and logistics group. They're really focused on transportation, parking, road closures, toilet facilities, sanitation, things of that nature. So what do we need to acquire and plan for as we prepare for that draft? We recognize the NFL, the Packers, Discover Green Bay are really going to be focused more on the campus area. We need to focus on that area that's going to be impacted outside of the campus. Obviously, public safety and public works are a big part of the operations, and so they're actively meeting with the NFL, Packers, and Discover Green Bay, and planning the security protocols that are going to be necessary to pull off this event. We have an activation and events group that's really focused on business involvement. So if you think about that draft in the D element, what are our businesses going to do and how can we coalesce with them to develop the best plan of action to make sure that they can maximize their business opportunities at the draft? So looking at possibly making an activation area similar to Woodward Avenue somewhere in the village. We have obviously information, promotion, and marketing of the village. And really what we're going to be focusing on that aspect is really community engagement. So we recognize Discover Green Bay, the Packers, the NFL, they're going to do a fantastic job of communicating to the general public for participating at the draft. But we don't necessarily have to spend a whole lot of time doing that. That's going to be done for us. We're just going to tie into that. What we need to be focused on is how is this going to impact our local businesses, our local residents? What does this look like when a road gets closed? For how long? What are the detours? How can I, you know, get to and from church, to the grocery store, so on and so forth? That's really what our focus is going to be on, is are the residents of Ashwabanon, the businesses of Ashwabanon, and how can we inform them and educate them of all the impacts that the draft may have, and how to really kind of maximize that? And then finally, we'll have a committee that's really focused on beautification and wayfinding. Very clear to us when we came into Detroit, we stayed at a, we flew into the airport, which is on the far west end of town. We stayed at a hotel on the west end. And when we went downtown, we had to drive on the interstate. It was very apparent, there was a very strong concerted effort to do a lot of right-of-way maintenance, so a lot of mowing, invasive species removals, litter pickup, graffiti, any dilapidated buildings, things of that nature, were cleaned up, boarded up, and looked good. Detroit, they really put on a great show. They did a fantastic job. And so we recognize that we have corridors, that we have an opportunity to maybe clean and make a more presentable environment for visitors into our area. And so that beautification and wayfinding group is really focused on that aspect. And so just kind of quickly to touch on this, what we wanted to see is what did the draft campus in Detroit look like in comparison to what we would experience here in Ashwabanon in Green Bay? So if you were to take by scale the boundary of the draft campus in Detroit, that's that red border, and place it on top of that Lambeau Field area, you can see that the overall area of Lambeau and Title Town would encompass and certainly carry the draft experience that was held in Detroit. The area that's kind of highlighted in yellow is what we anticipate the overall draft campus to encompass. We don't know that for sure. The NFL, what we've been told is in Detroit, they were making changes all the way up till the week before the draft. We'll have an idea of a general campus location, and certainly as we proceed through the remainder of this year and then going into next year, it will continue to get more and more clear or more and more concrete as we go along. But we do anticipate this to be the general area. The blue arrow on the map represents where we anticipate that theater area, the stage to be located. So we do anticipate the stage to be built on or near Oneida Street. So I would anticipate that Oneida Street will be closed, or a portion thereof, on the north end of Oneida Street, by the Expo Center for a duration of six weeks or more. That stage will eventually be tied into the Rush Expo. The Expo will likely be used as kind of that backstage area. So rather than like in Detroit, they actually built temporary structures for all of those backstage production areas. Here, they will simply use the Expo. So the Prospect Room, the Green Rooms, the backstage production, everything will be housed in the Expo Center. And we'll actually make our draft campus that much more efficient for the NFL and for the fan experience. Areas that in Title Town anticipate, things like the condominiums, the apartment buildings, things of that nature, they will likely be outside of the campus. So even though the campus will extend into Title Town, they are not going to take residences and put them inside the secure area. Because one of the things that the NFL will need to do in partnership with our local public safety is any of the buildings that are surrounding the campus, they will need to be swept for security purposes. And that includes bringing through bomb dogs and things of that nature to make sure that the buildings are secure. So what can citizens look for over the course of certainly the next few months? First and foremost, obviously, there's been a lot of interest about short-term rentals. And we're certainly going to be talking about that tonight as another agenda item. But if individuals are looking to make their home a short-term rental or convert a home to short-term rentals, the Discover Green Bay, in concert with the Room Tax Commission and all of the local municipalities, have created kind of a one-stop shop, if you will, on how to go about that properly and lawfully. So it's important that if people are looking to rent their home out, that they're ensuring that they get any proper permits that are necessary for that rental, and then all the necessary inspections to ensure that property is safe and secure for those guests. There will be plenty of opportunities for individuals to be volunteers, to support the draft, or, you know, temporary seasonal employment opportunities. Those are also on the Discover Green Bay website. So if you're interested in helping out, you can certainly register that way. For businesses and vendors, there is a Business Connect program by the NFL. And so I would encourage any businesses that are interested in partnering with the NFL directly and being a part of the campus experience, they register directly with the NFL. Again, that's on Discover Green Bay's website. So those could be things like mobile food establishments, direct sellers, things of that nature. With that being said, even though you may be partnering with the NFL, you still, if you're a vendor, would need to acquire the necessary permits in order to lawfully vend in the village. One of the things that will be especially noted is that oftentimes during a Packer Game Day, there are direct sellers that sell merchandise that are affiliated with an NFL franchise or the NFL itself. The NFL will be strictly cracking down on that. You will not, if you are a vendor that plans to sell green and gold necklaces, or Packer helmets, or, you know, makeshift uniforms or anything to that effect, that will likely be shut down pretty quick by the NFL. So find a different thing to sell. It will be highly regulated to ensure that you meet the branding requirements from the NFL. Obviously, look for ways to inform and promote and market your business. There's going to be a large captive audience coming to our area, and this is a great opportunity for you to promote your business. And certainly from a beautification standpoint, we're going to do what we can within public right-of-ways and public areas to beautify and provide wayfinding. But this is a great opportunity for you to kind of, if you have a building that needs to be painted, or a sign that needs to be repaired, or some landscaping that needs to be refurbished, now would be a great time to do it. Do it now because in April, it'll be too late because we'll be coming just out of winter, and at that time, it'll be difficult. So look at ways to beautify your individual property as well. Oftentimes, you see that when a community refurbs a road, reconstructs a road. Oftentimes, those businesses fix up their facade, or replace a sign, or do some landscaping improvements. This would be a good opportunity for you as well to do that, to really highlight your business. So with that, that was our experience. Gary, how'd I do? Was it better than the first time you saw it?
Well, it's about, I've got it pretty well memorized, so I think I can pick up after you. Joel, a couple of quick questions that I have. The first question I thought of, what are we doing as a village to make ourselves known? We're surrounded by that community, or I should say, the Packer field by three sides. As of right now, nobody knows where Ashwabanon is. I hope we're going to do something there. It seems like you've got the ball rolling as far as committees getting things going. The only other two questions I have is how long is a teardown to get this village back in shape? And how good was the sound when you were in the campus?
So to go through the three things that you had mentioned, so yes, so from a wayfinding standpoint, signage standpoint, that's one of the aspects of one of our committees, is to look into that and then prepare kind of an estimated budget. So with that being said, all of the committees, as they're working right now, they are working to identify what needs to be done. And then whatever that is, what is that going to cost? Because ultimately, we're going to need to bring that before the board and ultimately budget for those expenditures. So that's where we're at with that. And one of those aspects is wayfinding, signage, and community acknowledgement. To, I believe, answer your next question, sound was, or excuse me, the teardown. We anticipate the teardown to be about one to two weeks.
That long.
At least on the stage component of it. Obviously, any of those other areas within the campus, as they're shut down, they are not shut down for the full six to eight weeks. There may be soft closures here and there to allow equipment and other infrastructure to be put into place. But as an example, Ridge Road, that will likely be, a portion of Ridge Road will be in the campus. That will likely remain open up until the draft itself, and then it will close.
Okay.
And those areas would open shortly thereafter the draft's ending time. The only thing that would remain shut down for that teardown period would be that area where the stage is. Sound, I thought, was good. I think everybody would agree. There are speakers everywhere. Now I will add this comment, too. In Detroit, there were no areas within the theater unless you had an ADA accommodation or VIP for seating. So it was a standing-room-only crowd. I have been told from individuals at the Packer organization that the NFL is considering bringing temporary grandstands into our draft to allow areas for seating, because that was a complaint that they did receive in Detroit. So we don't know that for sure. There's certainly still a lot of unanswered questions. But we do know that they are discussing that as part of the planning efforts for this upcoming draft.
You know, a question I get asked quite a bit, the stage area, is that going to be shutting down Oneida Street is the question I get thrown at quite a bit.
It more than likely will close down Oneida Street. So it'll be on that north end. So generally, think of how Oneida Street closes for Packer Game Day. I think we close it around Stadium Drive, maybe Armed Forces. It'll be closed like that, but for an extended period of time.
A longer period of time. Because they're literally going to build a stage on the street itself, then, is what you're saying?
There is a possibility. I can't say that for certain, but we are told that that is a certain possibility, yes.
Okay, you've answered a few questions I had.
Any other questions from anybody? Okay, thank you, Joel. Moving on. 7B, Ashwabamay River Trail and Bridge ribbon-cutting ceremony, which is exciting time, Joel. Finally, we're going to get to open the Ashwabamay River Trail Bridge on June 18th from 11 to 12 o'clock, right?
Rex is bringing his hot dog trailer in, and David's cooking his hot dogs.
Right.
So hot dogs and lemonade, I believe. So it should be a good time. The board has been invited, so please, please come.
Okay.
Hopefully, the weather will be good.
Hopefully.
Rex, you've always got the luck for good weather.
I don't think you should thank Gary for that.
Don't be jinxing me.
I was going to say.
Okay, thank you. So that, don't forget, June 18th from 11 o'clock to 12 o'clock out at the Ashwabamay River Trail and Bridge. And then 7C, Ashwabanon and Dutchman Creek Habitat Restoration Public Information Meeting is June 4th at 6:30 at the National Railroad Museum. That's the restoration that we're doing, that the DNR is doing in Creeks?
Correct. That's through the Natural Resources Damage Assessment Fund. So there are proposed wildlife and aquatic habitat improvements along the Fox River bordering Ashwabamay Park, as well as in Dutchman's Creek between Terror on the Fox and the National Railroad Museum. Other things that they're looking at are shoreline stabilization around the exterior of Ashwabamay, invasive species removal, as well as a potential kayak launch. So that's all going to be discussed and feedback taken at this meeting.
Yep. And like I said, that one is June 4th at 6:30 at the National Railroad Museum, if anybody wants to attend. Okay, number eight, action on the consent agenda. Consider Discuss Act on 2024-2025 Retail Alcohol License Renewals. B is Consider Discuss Act on Change of Agent for Multiple Establishments. C, Consider Discuss Act on Temporary Beer License Premise Extension at Breakout Green Bay LLC, DBA Green Bay Acts. D, Consider Discuss Act on the Alcohol Beverage License Renewal for a Class B beer, Class B liquor license, and a premise change at the Green Bay Moose Lodge, number 801, Loyal Order of Moose, Inc., DBA Green Bay Moose Lodge 801, Inc. E, Consider Discuss Act on Resolution R 5-1-24, Approving Ashwabanon 2023 Compliance Maintenance Annual Report. F, Consider Discuss Act on Management Analyst Position Description and Authorization to Proceed with Recruitment/Hiring of Position. G, Receive and Accept April 2024 Fund Financial Reports. H, Receive and Accept April 2024 Investment Report. I, Receive and Accept April 2024 Budget Expenditures Report. J, Receive and Accept May 2024 Public Works Department Monthly Report. K, Receive and Accept Parks, Rec, and Forestry Department Reports. Does anybody want any of these items taken out, or else we need a motion to approve?
I'd like to see 8F pulled out. I'd just like to hear a little bit more about that. Have Joel just kind of explain what he's looking there for that management analyst position.
Okay, so we'll pull 8F out. Anybody else?
And I'll move to approve with that one being pulled out.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda while pulling number F out. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Okay, what is your question, Jay?
Joel, I'd just like to, you know, I know you're trying to consolidate and do all that, kind of your thought process as to how you see that flowing. Because obviously, it's supporting Patrick, Mary, yourself. There's a lot of moving parts there, just kind of, how do you see that all working?
Sure. And I think that's why we're kind of retooling the position, is reflecting some of the changes that have happened organizationally over the last 12 months. As you recall, as part of the 2024 budget, there were some planned or anticipated retirements. And as a result of those retirements, we retooled the org chart on more of the administrative side to accommodate some of those changes. So as part of this budget process, we knew that Terry was likely to retire in 2024. And so it was an appropriate time to begin the recruitment of an HR generalist, to which we've now since hired. By and large, that person is taking a lot of the HR role and responsibility that Terry once had in this position. So human resources-wise, all that administrative work has gone to Megan as the HR generalist. In addition to that, we knew Barb was In addition to that, we knew Barb was going to be retiring as our assessment technician. In addition to that, with some of the changes in state law on the assessment technician, uh, we knew that there wasn't really necessarily a need to have an assessment technician. However, going into the 2024 year, it being a large election year and seeing the increasing demands on our clerk's office, we decided to convert that assessment technician into a full-time deputy clerk role, to which we've since hired for that. Uh, Jennifer has taken that role and done well. Now, recognizing Terry's departure, Jennifer's, uh, start to replace, uh, the retiring Barb, um, we also looked at the org chart and said, it makes sense to make some structural changes to our, what our current deputy clerk and legal assistant position is and shift some of that legal responsibility into what will eventually be that replacing position for Terry's spot. And so, with this particular management analyst position, it is doing the bulk, bulk of the work that Terry has been responsible for over the last several years. Uh, will continue to be that point person and that contact person for the village board, board committees, commission, so on and so forth. So we'll do all the work that Terry does from that aspect of preparing agenda packets, recording minutes, doing, doing that type of work. Uh, in addition to that, this person will take on what our current deputy clerk legal assistant is doing for Patrick and bring that in-house. Uh, and so that will ultimately free up Beth, our deputy clerk legal assistant, to just primarily focus on the clerk's office and the clerk's role. So we're really kind of adding more than a one, 1.0 FTE into the clerk's office as a result of those changes, but yet shifting the responsibilities into this analyst role. Um, there were some questions at finance and personnel about, you know, is this, is kind of adding, uh, um, some, s- an individual a- at a higher level? And it, it, not really. Uh, it, it's called a management analyst because it's not really an assistant too. Uh, there are aspects of this job where this individual's going to have to take a lead and primary role in the administration of a project or a task. As an example, uh, Terry presently handles our commercial and workers' compensation liability insurance programs. This analyst will continue that aspect. Terry has the benefit of almost 44 years of experience. Uh, we will not be able to find somebody off the street with that level of expertise. So, by having the analyst and by having the educational requirements for the position as they are set, it allows us to at least bring somebody in with that foundational understanding and that desire and willingness to learn and grow in those municipal aspects of this particular position.
Okay, alright.
Jay, for what it's, what it's worth, um, at committee, we did ask Terry if, um, she felt that, uh, the responsibilities for the new position were, um, would present any unusual challenges, or if they were, and she, she was real comfortable with it.
Good.
What was proposed.
It, it just was a lot, and, um, is that person gonna report directly to you then?
Correct. Mary and myself, yep.
Okay, alright. Um, after that discussion, I moved to approve the, uh, management analyst, uh, position descri- description, along with the authorization to hire.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the management analyst position description and authorize the recruitment and hiring of that position. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed.
Aye.
I know that that's an aye.
Yes.
Motion carried. Thank you, Tracy. Number, there's a little bit of a delay. You must be far away.
I am far away, yes.
Okay, number nine, public hearing. Public hearing on a Planned Unit Development PUD Amendment Ordinance Number 05-1-24 to permit a drive-through window at 2325 Holmgren Way, Suite 130 Parcel VA-116-8-1. Aaron.
Alright, thank you. Uh, as discussed, the, this is a very minor, uh, PUD amendment, uh, to allow for the construction of a drive-through window, uh, at the west elevation of the existing strip mall, uh, at 2325 Holmgren Way. Uh, for those of you familiar, um, that does currently have the, uh, Brad Smith, uh, tenant in the strip mall. This would take the place of the, uh, westernmost, uh, empty, uh, space right now. The, uh, the drive-through window would allow for the construction of a, it's a fresh salad, uh, wrap restaurant to move in there.
Okay. Is there anybody in the audience or online that would like to speak for or against this item? Is there anybody in the audience or online that would like to speak for or against this item? One more time. Is there anybody in the audience or online that would like to speak for or against this item?
I would.
No, you're, you're good. You don't have to stay. Okay.
Okay, okay. So, with that, I need a motion to close the floor, please. Close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion and a second to close the public hearing. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed. Motion carried. Thank you. Public hearing is closed. Number 10, action items. 10A, Consider Discuss Act on a Planned Unit Development PUD Amendment Ordinance Number 05-1-24 to permit a drive-through window at 2325 Holmgren Wa- Way, Suite 130, Parcel VA-116-8-1. Okay?
Alright, uh, I'll just bring, share my screen. Alright, and this is the site plan, uh, that demonstrates the location of the, uh, window. There's currently a full drive, driveline that extends from Cormier Lane in the north, uh, then traverses south past the proposed drive-through window to the internal driveline that then connects, uh, to the west to, uh, Holmgren Way. Uh, there's adequate space for a queuing lane, uh, and, uh, it does meet the, uh, the overall intent of the, uh, the PUD and the development for this area. Uh, Plan- Planning Commission did recommend approval, uh, of the PUD amendment. They did request that the amendment be specific to Suite 130, uh, which is indicated on the, uh, PUD amendment ordinance itself.
Okay. Any questions for Aaron, or I'll entertain a motion?
It went through the plan board.
Aaron, I-
Real simply, no problems. Uh, move to approve is presented.
I'd second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, but I think Tracy might have a comment.
Yep, yeah, just under discussion, Aaron. I was wondering, is this the site where we were looking at that taproom? Or is this a different end of the building?
That is correct. This was a proposed, uh, Lombardi, uh, Brew House, Lombardi Tap House, uh, I believe. Probably about a year ago or so. Uh, that project unfortunately did fall through. Uh, so this is a replacement tenant, uh, for that location.
Okay, that's, I was just wondering if it was the same spot. Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve ordinance number 05-1-24. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Okay. 10B, Consider Discuss Act on a Resubmitted Site Plan Review Request for the Common Place Building Two at 676 Mike McCarthy Way, Parcels VA-55 and VA-55-A. Aaron.
Alright, uh, again, I'll share my screen. Uh, as discussed, this is a resubmitted site plan, um, by Merge Urban Development for the Common Place Building Two. Uh, this was previously approved, uh, by Village Board, uh, about a year and a half ago or so. Uh, there was just a ramp-up time, uh, for leasing in Building One to get the financing necessary for Building Two. Uh, they are all set now to continue with Building Number Two. But in the meantime, the site plan, which is good for one year, uh, did expire. So the submitted site plan is exactly the same as what was approved, uh, by Village Board about a year and a half ago. I'll hit some of the highlights, uh, of the site plan itself. Uh, in terms of the overall site plan, what you see here, uh, to the left is existing Building One with, uh, Odyssey Climbing and Fitness right here on the end. Building Two is be located here, again, on Mike McCarthy Way, uh, with a common space, kind of pedestrian walkway, with a crosswalk that connects further to the north into Green Bay's Legends District, uh, if and when, uh, that does develop. We wanna make sure that there was a pedestrian connection, uh, to make that connection, kind of make more of a seamless, uh, approach at that area. Uh, this is the overall landscape plan, uh, for the site. Uh, floor plate, uh, there's first floor commercial, uh, uses here on the west end of the building. Uh, and then we have lobby areas, uh, bike room, and some residential, uh, on the east end. Uh, floors then, two through five, uh, are replicated with residential, uh, units, uh, above. Exterior renderings, again, do meet our, uh, site plan, uh, review design requirements. Uh, consists of a masonry block on the first floor, and then concealed, uh, fully concealed fastener, uh, metal wall panels, uh, with balconies, uh, and some accent, uh, areas, uh, as shown. Just different angle, uh, this again is Mike McCarthy Way. You see the checkered area, Odyssey Climbing and Fitness to the rear. Um, and then again, the commercial area right here in the corner to activate that, uh, plaza. On the backside, uh, again, this just shows that pedestrian plaza that connects, uh, to the north, uh, as well as the, uh, the green space, uh, that's anticipated in that area. Uh, in terms of recommended conditions of approval, uh, again, they are the same as what was previously approved, uh, about a year and a half ago. I'll just read through those for the record. Uh, as a building that's greater than 50 feet tall and with an airport zoning district C, the applicant must obtain an application for height permit and approval from the Green Bay Austin Straball Airport Director. Uh, use of fully concealed fasteners for metal wall panels. Screen any new rooftop or ground mounted mechanical units visible from the property boundaries or public right-of-way. Extension of the pedestrian way to the north through the parking lot to the future Green Bay Legends District, Tony Canadale Run. A combination certified survey map will need to be prepared and recorded to remove the property line between Parcels VA-55 and VA-55-A. Uh, meet all applicable requirements of the Ashwabhanan Site Plan Review and all other applicable village ordinances. Uh, from engineering, uh, review the as-built drawings to try to utilize existing sanitary water and storm sewer laterals. Coordinate new utility lateral installation with public right-of-way, uh, if needed with, uh, Al Farber, Ashwabhanan Utility Operations Supervisor. Continuing on, uh, submit final stormwater plan of underground storage calcs and sizing details for review. Uh, this will utilize the, uh, regional ashland pond, so buying of the ashland pond to meet the water quality requirements. Uh, include the anticipated cost and the updated stormwater plan. We had no comments from, uh, public safety. Uh, from forestry, submit a detailed landscape plan and planting schedule for review and approval by the village forester, and, uh, no additional comments from, uh, bike and ped. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Any questions? It is, like Aaron said, this is just a resubmital because it ti- time ran out, so.
The shot through, uh, site plan real easy. It was just a duplication. Aaron crossed all the Ts and dotted the Is where needed, so we're in good shape there. So I'll move to approve his presented with staff, uh, conditions.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the resubmitted site plan for the Common Place Building Two on Mike McCarthy. Uh, any further discussion? Uh, with staff conditions, I'm sorry. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Thank you. 10C, Consider Discuss Act on Appeal of Denied Operator's License Gregory M. Harrell. Patrick.
Uh, Mr. Harrell applied for his operator's license through the village. Um, staff, after the operator's license guideline was adopted by the board, staff followed the guideline. Uh, Mr. Harrell does have three convictions within the last five years. He was charged as a repeater from, um, the state of Wisconsin in Brown County for most recent conviction. Um, excuse me, most recent charge. Uh, he does have one that's pending as of right now. According to the guidelines, Mr. Harrell does not qualify for the operator's license. So the staff did administratively deny, according to the guideline, the, um, operator and or ordinance, the operator can appeal that to the public, to committee. Um, the, uh, Protection and Welfare Committee did, um, uh, vote to deny, uh, Mr. Harrell, or, excuse me, uphold the denial of Mr. Harrell's, uh, appeal. So we're just at the next step. I, I spoke with Mr. Harrell on the phone. He did indicate that he'd wish to speak with the board, um, to attempt to obtain his operator's license.
Okay.
Is Mr. Harrell present?
No, he's not.
So Mr. Harrell here. I didn't think I recognized anybody in the audience, so.
Oh, and, uh, I have actually had discussions with him since then at the establishment and, uh, have, uh, shared with him that, um, his actions need to, uh, speak a little louder than his words. And, um, so I, I was the one that, that had a direct discussion with him. And I think also what we should do as a follow-up is to make sure that, um, the establishments that, um, you know, that they state they're gonna be working at understand that they don't have a operator's license. Um, I understand that, yeah, they can have, if somebody on staff there has a license, they can maybe still be a, a waiter, or serving drinks, things like that. But, um, I think we need to make sure that the owners of the, of the establishments also know this. So, I would again, uh, like I did in public works, uh, uphold, uh, the denial of the operator's license.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to uphold the denial of Gregory Harrell's operator license. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. 10D, Consider Discuss Act on Reserve Class B Beer, Class B Liquor License Request for MC Ashwabhanan, Inc., DBA Millions Crab. Chris.
So Millions Crab is requesting approval of a reserve Class B beer, Class B liquor license for 2,800 South Oneida Street. All their paperwork and corresponding fee has been filed accordingly. Public Works and Protection Committee unanimously denied the Reserve Class B Beer, Class B Liquor License Request at their meeting. Um, she is here to s- to speak if you have any questions.
Okay. Would anybody like to hear? I'm sorry, Tracy-
Are they open right? I'm sorry, Mary, are, are they open right now?
Yes.
Have they been?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, okay. I thought they closed.
No, they're, they're open.
Okay.
Would anybody like to hear from the applicant? Questions for the applicant?
I'm moved to open the floor.
Second.
Motion and a second to open the floor. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed.
Aye.
Motion, motion carried. If you would like to come up and state your name and address for the record at the chair, please.
Yes, my name is Xing Komi Tong. Address is, uh, 647 South Ashland Avenue, uh, Green Bay, Wisconsin, 544 V O V. Uh, I'm the new owner of the Millions Crab. But the thing is, like, um, I've been working with them like last two years. So the thing is, like, we want to make the establishment, uh, more success. Like, we know, like, for me, I'm in charge of the back of the house and also the marketing. So I noticed a lot of complaint about no beer and liquors. And also, like, we know a lot of things not happening on the building, like, the construction wise, the parking lots, things like that. So, from the last year, we will try to put a lot of effort to make it more licensed. But we think if we can get the liquor license first, that is something that we can do immediately, uh, can help our revenue increase and then make more improvement.
I have a question for you. Have you ever applied for a beer and wine license?
Uh, not in this city, not this restaurant.
Not at this restaurant?
Yeah, I do have other restaurants in other state.
Okay, I'm, I'm only asking because, um, that, that building as a restaurant has never had a liquor license, so. Anyway, any other questions from anybody?
Nope.
Nope.
Move to close floor.
We have a motion and a second to close the floor. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Thank you.
I don't have a problem on giving her a beer and wine license, but, uh, the, the short, uh, of it is we do not have a lot of liquor license as far as alcohol to be given out. We would like to see a large, a larger facility get that license if it ever happens. So, my recommendation is give her a beer and wine and no liquor.
I would agree with Gary.
So I, first of all, I have a question. Patrick, can we do that here, or do we have to?
Um, so the application can be amended to just approve the beer and wine. Uh, there might be some paperwork that maybe the clerk's office would need to discuss with the applicant. But at this point, it can be approved, um, based on the specific, I guess, license that's been given. So beer and wine can be permitted. Uh, if the board isn't comfortable, um- If the board is uncomfortable deciding to give the applicant a Class B liquor license, then I feel like a rational basis has been decided or stated in the record. That's really all the board really needs is a rational basis to uphold or deny for that matter. I guess what I'm hearing is once it's been stated for the record is that maybe this, I think the last Class B liquor license that we have is better utilized elsewhere to have more economic impact in the community, maybe promoting that somewhere along the lines of maybe we're near the sports entertainment district, for example. Maybe not the most efficient location is used at this, is the best use for this liquor license. But regarding your original question, Mary, yes, it can be amended to approve just that beer and wine license.
Okay.
If that is still what she wants. So we'd have to obviously acknowledge with the applicant that if it is not, if the liquor license is not approved, would she still be okay with the beer and wine?
Is there a limit on the number of beer and wine licenses we have? I don't think so.
You know, we had a lot of other small businesses similar to hers wanting that one liquor license that we have. We denied them, so. I would make a motion to deny the liquor license, but could approve, could apply for wine and beer.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second to deny the liquor license, excuse me, the Class B beer/Class B liquor license, but approve wine and beer. Does everybody understand? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Thank you. Okay, 10E, Consider Discuss Act on Special Event Application for Budweiser Clydesdales. Chris.
There's been a request by Dean Distributing for approval of Budweiser Clydesdale Event Road Closure on Friday, July 12th from 4:30 to 7:00 PM. Village staff recommends denial of closing Holmgren Way, but is in favor of Armed Forces Drive being closed. And he is in the audience to answer any questions.
Move to, move to open the floor.
Second.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to open the floor, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Floor is open. Could you come to the table and state your name and address for the record, please?
Jeremy Stahl, 3546.
Who's speaking to Mike, Jeremy?
Jeremy Stahl, 3546 Black Wolf Run, Green Bay.
Okay. Any questions for Jeremy?
I had a question. You were requesting Armed Forces Drive and a portion of Holmgren Way.
Correct.
Why do you need all that space?
Well, what they would like to do with the full hitch of the Clydesdales is they call it an old-fashioned beer delivery. What they would do is go to the Rush Center, then D2 Stadium View, Anduzy's in the bar, and actually deliver a case of beer off the hitch. That's the actual concept of this. So that's why we would ask that Holmgren Way portion be closed for that time period.
How long is it going to be closed?
They would, they would arrive at 5 o'clock in the blue parking lot next to the Packers' practice facility, and it takes about an hour. It's about an hour presentation of them hitching, and then the beer deliveries is the following hour. They stop at each location and do photos.
And I think the Clydes, go on, whoever.
Oh, I was wondering if you could do it with like half of Holmgren closed off and part of it still open, would that work?
Yes, it would just be from Armed Forces to Mike McCarthy Way, just that one block area there.
I guess my question.
We could do it with half too, if that would work.
My question is to Chief, what are we talking about manpower when we're going to do something like that? I can see Armed Forces Way being kind of simple because you can block it off on each end. Now you're talking, you're going to close off open, what are we talking for manpower?
Right, so, you know, with Armed Forces, that's easy barricade block, close that off, no big deal. But if we're moving and closing half a street, for example, then we've got to personnel for that, not only our personnel, but Public Works as well, helping us to close that out. So of course, normally when we do that, we charge for that as well, but we'd have to plan ahead of time. I guess my question is, is do you really need the road closed? Because you can legally take the Clydesdales down the road and get to your bar, to bar to bar.
Cool.
You're going to regret saying that.
I think they would prefer to have it closed.
Yeah, and I just want to mention, so Chris brought it up as staff's recommendation. So if you recall, the special event policy that was adopted a couple of years ago requires the us to bring forward to the board, street closures for roads that are considered arterials and collectors. So that's, that's why this is coming before the board. In this particular case, this is a promotional event for Budweiser, if you will, the Clydesdale. So our recommendation was more or less, does this provide a public interest? Like, is it a marathon run or something that people can participate in? That was the primary basis for our denial on the arterial closure is that this is really a promotional activity for Budweiser more than it is the event that provides a public good. But that certainly is, it should be noted that it is the board's discretion as to whether to grant or deny it. We can staff it, it's just a matter of whether or not you think that this type of event validates and warrants a full closure of an arterial or collector street.
Right, so we're providing staff there to close down a road for a few minutes, but it goes from the Rush to wherever you're going, Anduzy's, and we're closing it down for a little bit of time that's on the road there, then you're spending time at that bar, and then you're going to the next one, so we're closing it time for a short time. You really need the access to the road, so that's the question that the board will have to decide. Do we want to provide manpower and staffing for the short amount of time they're actually on the road?
Well, and another thing too, like Joel just said, Holmgren is an arterial road. You know, we start, continue to close arterial roads for promotional events like this. There's businesses on that road. There's people that are going to come down Lombardi and want to get down on Holmgren, so.
What time do you want that closed?
4:30 to 7:00, it says.
4:30 to, oof. You know, I think, my opinion, and I follow the Clydesdales, I think it's probably one of the most beautiful animals that you're ever going to see. I would do anything to try and see you get something happen to promote it for the area here. They've been in our area several times, it's been a while since they've been here. I would, I'm willing to figure out how we can do it.
I am too. I'm a huge fan of the Clydesdales. I would say it's like a Thursday night.
Friday.
Oh, it's Friday.
All the establishments we would be stopping at are, you know, are supportive of this event. They're looking forward to it. We've already touched base with them. The Rush Center is on board with us using their parking lot, so, I mean, there's no objections there.
I would say if there are expenses with public safety having to close, would it be less expensive if we just closed it from 4:30 to 7:30 instead of closing and opening and closing and opening? And then why don't we just pass on those expenses to the people holding the event?
Yeah, we'll certainly do that. I don't know if it's less expensive or not. I mean, we're still closing down the road. We still have to staff it to do that. So, I mean, yeah, we will pass on those expenses to the event, to the vendor to do that. But, you know, you're taxing, taxing the employees as well for an event that may or may not be necessary to close down a road. I guess I'll leave that up to you guys to do that, but we will certainly make the appropriate accommodations for the financial aspect of it.
Would we, Brian Rickert, would we have an issue having Public Works guys come in to close and open? That's a major street. That's a major street coming off of Lombardi Avenue. I love Clydesdales, I love horses, but this is a Friday night, it's a major street. That's tough.
Well, and when you're going to bring an event into town, it's going to create one of our major streets to do it. That's where the action is.
Yeah, I agree with Gary. I mean, this is an event that, like Gary and Kelly said, the Clydesdales are cool, and I think if it's advertised throughout the community, you'll have a lot of people coming. We shut down that road for Packer Games all the time, and to shut it down for this, invite the public in, I think it would be just a great event, and I would definitely support shutting it down for this event.
I am going to agree with Tracy for once.
Wow.
I think it's a unique experience for the community, and I'm always thinking, you know, what more can the community do to get the people involved in things? This is once in a lifetime, not a lifetime thing, but, you know, once in every 10 years that you bring them here, probably. The last time I seen them, I think they're out at the Warriors Farm is the last one I remember, but they were there for sure, I don't think there was a meeting. But what they're doing, I think, is great for the public.
I'd have to agree. I would rather see the road closed for this than a marathon, so I'm in support of letting the Clydesdales go down the street.
And I can understand why they want the road closed. The horses could be, you know, the horses are used to people, but you don't want cars running alongside of them.
Jeremy, where's the closest the Clydesdales are going to be in the near future to this area?
I can't say that, but we haven't had them here since 2012. We put in a proposal for them every year, and this is the first year since.
It's pretty unique. What, do you know what kind of, just based on other areas, what kind of draw you would expect numbers-wise?
Thousands of people. I mean, we get, you were in business, we get asked for them every year from multiple locations or establishments, and it's just not, it's a very rare thing to get the full hitch.
So, but, and right now, this isn't officially approved by Budweiser yet, correct?
We are getting them for sure, it's just.
Regardless of?
Regardless, if we get the road closed or not, we will have them here. We would love to be in Ashwaban, but if, you know, it doesn't work, it doesn't work.
Yeah, I agree with Gary.
I think we should make it work.
Yeah, somehow, yeah.
I agree.
I'll move to approve the special event application for the Budweiser Clydesdales.
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second to approve the special event application for Budweiser Clydesdales. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say no. Say no. Say aye. Opposed. No. Not because I don't like the Clydes, and I think it's a great thing, I just see how all these road closures, a major arterial road, you could do it on Armed Forces Drive, and it is, puts big stress on our staff. Yes, we have to, we need a motion to close the floor.
Motion to close the floor.
Second.
Motion and a second to close the floor, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Floor is closed, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. F, 10F, Consider Discuss Act on Frag Mightys Management Plan Proposal for US 41 Lombardi Site.
Okay, we put out a request for proposals a little over a month ago for the Frag Mightys removal in front of the Cabela's site on the corner of 41 and Lombardi. We had two very interested parties that gave us a lot of questions. One of them submitted a proposal, that was StanTech. It's a five-year management plan for the Frag Mightys. They did, it was already sprayed in the fall, so what you see there now is dead, but there's probably still stuff coming up through the rhizomes that you can't see. But it's a five-year management plan. Right now, we're looking at cutting down what is currently in place. It's not being removed or anything like that, but it's being cut down, and then we're looking at re-spraying again in the fall with any new Frag Mightys that is starting to come up, to keep on knocking that down, because it's going to take a few years to knock it down until it's manageable by us. Also, this fall, they're looking at starting the planting plan. Now, there's a lot of different levels of planting. Some of them will be able to be done by the draft if this is approved, others will not be. So right now, it's the major planting that's going to be done, which would be a lot of the trees that can be planted or best planted in the fall. And then the hope is, weather permitting, we'd be able to get the rest of the trees in for the first round prior to the draft in April. Is there someone here from StanTech tonight? There are two, there you are. We do have some representatives here from StanTech who can help better answer questions that you may have. If you guys want to head over to the podium and just maybe state your names and catch anything that I missed, feel free to, feel free to give that information out.
I can move to open the floor.
Second.
Motion and a second to open the floor, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Floor is open. State your name and address for the record, please.
Chris Kaplan, W6885 Kirshner Road, Chayockton, Wisconsin.
Brooke Dreschek, 3124 Wyden Heth Lane, Abrams, Wisconsin, 54101.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions for them about the Frag Mightys, which I complained in every meeting I ever am in, I'm complaining about Frag Mightys. Drives me nuts.
Since it's a five-year, what are you anticipating? And then with planting these trees, does that start to help the process? Fill us in a little more on that.
So the tree planting doesn't necessarily help the process. It's going to take several years, I would imagine, before the Frag Mightys is under control over there, just because it's been running wild for so long. So the plan that we wrote, we wrote it with an adaptive perspective. Basically, if the site's not ready to plant trees, we're not going to plant trees. The goal for the short term would be to essentially kind of get a row of trees along the sidewalk for the draft. We would mow the dead stalks this winter under frozen conditions to minimize any ground disturbance or rutting or anything like that, just kind of make it look halfway decent for the draft. Long-term, we would be doing some seeding and planting, you know, when the site's ready. So it could be anywhere from two to three to four years down the road.
Right. So, you know, you also heard the NFL draft presentation, you know, following that, yeah, to try to make it look nice and neat and cleaned up for the draft area, that's very important, so. In your, have you done this with other communities before? How, because I know Frag Mightys, they just pop up all over the place. How good are you able to get them? And this isn't, this is a reflection on you, I know how tough they are to get rid of, it's a matter, you know, how lucky are you to get rid of them?
Yeah, so we've been doing a lot of Frag Mightys work with throughout the region. We've secured millions of dollars of grant funding throughout the state, and we've actually treated upwards of 3,000 acres of Frag Mightys throughout Manitowoc and Sheboygan Counties. So we're very experienced with, you know, killing the Frag Mightys. Revegetating is another story. We don't have a ton of experience doing that. However, once we get the Frag Mightys under control, we should be able to establish it, and we'll monitor it, and, you know, long-term, and make sure that we stay on top of it. And once we get the Frag Mightys out of there too, we're going to put some native seed down, some plug plantings, and really get after it to make sure that, you know, it doesn't come back.
So within your proposal, there's all the replanting and everything as well?
Correct, yep.
Excellent. Thank you.
So I heard you say spraying, and, or Rex maybe said you spray it and then you mow it. Is part of the job, like, getting a digger in there, isn't it a rhizome? Don't you have to, like, dig them out?
Yeah, so that's kind of why we wrote it adaptively, so that we can stay after it with herbicide for many years. Basically, if you disturb the soil, you could bring new seeds to the surface, so we're trying to minimize ground disturbance, and we're only mowing it during the dormant season, because if you mow it during the growing season, those little fragments can actually spread and start their own rhizominous colonies from there. So we're basically just going to be mowing the dead stalks out just to make it look nice, and then that'll allow easier site access as well.
And the chemical that we use translocates into the root system, so we're using that herbicide each year to attack the rhizomes in the soil.
And by delaying the tree planting too, then we wouldn't be spraying around the trees, basically, so we're, would, you know, protect the investment, basically. Wait till the time is right and don't rush it.
Can you guys just, so with the stuff that will be cut down, can you explain to the board then, do we just leave it in place? I think right now, the plan is just to leave it in place, or at least where trees are going to be planted, to push it off to the side. What size is it going to be? Is it just going to stay there perpetuity? Does it break down on its own? Where are we at with that?
Yeah, so it should break down on its own. The method that we're planning to use is a fecon head mower, which is basically like a big cylindrical drum with a bunch of teeth. We use it a lot of times for chomping up buckthorn and stuff like that, so we're hoping that this is going to turn it into a powder, basically, and pretty much pulverize it. If there are areas that need to be removed, we would just rake it out by hand or find a piece of equipment that'd be able to get it out of the way for us.
Are there not seeds in that as well?
There are, but they're not as, it's not as aggressive through seed as it is through rhizomes.
Gotcha, okay.
So I know we've talked in the past of what to do with it. There's been a couple of things talked about, whether we gather it up and truck it out. I think talking with John Weider over at StanTech, I think that was going to be almost another 20,000 or something like that, to actually remove it if we chose to do that. We also talked about putting it into smaller piles and burning it, which I guess is still an option, but the problem with that is that creates a lot of ash, and there's an option, but the problem with that is that creates a lot of ash and there's a lot of cars in the parking lots and cars driving by. So now you have the possibility of ash falling on people's cars and having those concerns. So there's, there's still, I just want to make sure everyone knows that once it's cut at this point, at least the way it's planned right now, it's going to be left on site.
Yeah. And it's got a very high organic material content on it, so if you do burn it, it's got a very dark, thick smoke than most prescribed burns that we do for like Prairies and stuff like that.
So what, what is it going to look like, the, the part that's cut and laying there? Is this going to be a powder because you're going to grind it up or is it going to be like stalks laying on the?
We're hoping there's not going to be stalks. It should get kind of worked into the soil, we're hoping. And then as far as revegetation, we're hoping that what grows up will kind of cover that up over time. So it's not going to look, you know, beautiful the first year per se, but it will be dealt with as appropriately as possible to try to hide it as best we can, basically. And that's what we're doing in the wintertime. We'll hopefully kind of work it in a little bit too.
When are you planning on doing this cutting in that again?
It would be this winter during frozen ground conditions, assuming we get frozen ground conditions. Otherwise, we'll have to, we have other options for equipment we can try to get in there that'll leave a lighter footprint.
Wouldn't want to do it now.
No.
I'm just wondering if that looks, what looks better for the draft stuff laying down on the ground or if we just leave it up for the draft?
Oh, it can't be up for the draft. Ooh. If they're, if they plant trees along the sidewalk, like from Lombardi, you wouldn't see it.
Okay.
Yeah, the, the trees will kind of offer a screen for us, I think, and as we mulch up all those Frag Mighty stocks, I think it'll actually be kind of a nice ground layer covering some of the mud, maybe. So that's, that's the hope.
I live next to a big stream full of it between Bay Harbor and Alden Station. There's some kind of a creek or something that is loaded and it looks nasty when they're laying down and some are up, some are down. It's bad.
Yeah, this would be a more consistent pattern after we get done mowing it. And that would also, like I said, help make room just for easier management down the road. We wouldn't be, you know, working through the stalks to get the trees in the ground, basically. We'd kind of have a blank slate to dig easier and that kind of stuff too.
And the ground exposure will flush more seeds too, so that we can get at least another round and a good application hopefully in the next two years.
So the submittal by Stantec was for the dollar amount of 181,659. That's over a five-year plan. Probably the first year or two would need to be borne by the village. And then by that point, we will have applied for grants, which could hopefully defray costs on year three, four, and five.
And I see here it's coming out of TID 3, so.
Yeah.
That is correct.
Okay.
I just have a couple of quick questions. Okay, in regard to the trees, they would be planted then this fall in anticipation of being in for the draft in April of next year, is that correct?
Yeah, it would be either this fall or early next spring before the draft, but they would definitely be in before the draft along the sidewalk.
And the chemicals that you're putting in to take care of the Frag Mities with putting the trees in, would that be hard on the trees? Is that any damage to them, putting them so close to when you're putting the product in to kill the Frag Mities?
So our staff has been treating Frag Mities for, I think, over 10 years in Manitowoc and Sheboygan County. And we deal with a lot of private landowners who plant trees in these areas too. So we do a really good job of, you know, not having off-target damage and being careful around those spots. And by the time those areas are prepped for the trees, we typically see a much smaller density of frag after, after those first initially two years of treatments. So the percentage that will be out there will look a lot different than what we're seeing right now.
Okay, so as far as the trees being planted in that area after the treatment, the chemical treatment, that won't negatively impact them, which you found in, in the past?
No. The, the only way it could impact is if that chemical hits the leaves more than 20 to 30% coverage.
Okay. Okay. And then my other question has to do with the cost of it, the 181,000. And this isn't necessary through Stantec, but from the start with this project, my concern is the village is putting money into taking care of a stuff on private property that is not our property and wanted an agreement with the Green Bay Packers that they were going to take care of this or be part of the funding for this. And I'm not comfortable signing a contract with these folks until something is set for the Packers, with the Packers.
So Tracy, I've been, I've been in contact with the Packers about this. Nothing has been solidified yet. I was on Brown Dog today and almost two-thirds of that is actually DOT right-of-way. It's not, it's not owned by the Packers, so I will continue to keep working. But also with the, the monies from TID 3, a large portion of those monies were donate, or donated, were paid by the Packers Development. So that's what we're working through.
Yeah. And I understand that, Mary, that, you know, part of it DOT and then, you know, the Packers pay into the TID with development like any other developer would, but, you know, sometimes the village gets criticized that you do everything for the Packers, but you don't do anything for us. And I've already heard comments from people, now we're paying for taking Frag Mities out from Packer property, why are we doing that? So that's my concern on it. I'm not comfortable with this contract until we get some, a contract with the Packers.
Okay. Any other questions for the Stantec reps?
Move to close the floor. Second.
We have a motion and a second to close the floor. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Posed. Motion carried. The floor is closed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I need a motion.
Rex, we have to do something with the Frag Mities, correct? The longer we wait, the just the worse it's going to get, like any other invasive species?
Correct.
That being said, I would make a motion to approve the Frag Mighty Management Plan Proposal for US 41 Lombardi Site, as discussed.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the Frag Mities Management Plan Proposal for 181,659. Before we vote though, Tracy, I'd also like to, to say that they will be applying for the grants for, for the, the, some of this management also. So anyway.
Yeah, which is great and hopefully we'll get some, that'll cover some of the costs, but.
My concern is if we do nothing, that 181,000 will turn into 400 and some thousand dollars next year, like it does with everything else.
Okay, does everybody understand the, the motion? Yep, okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Posed.
No.
Okay, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
10G, consider discuss act on Village of Ashwabnan Ordinance 6-13 Licensing of Short-Term Rentals. Patrick.
So if the village board recalls, last year, there was some significant ordinance amendments to the actual short-term rental licensing process and how the operations function. Of note is the six-night minimum, six-night consecutive rental that's required for all non-owner occupied short-term rental licensees. The other one that's kind of in contention or a lot of discussion was 180 consecutive days. And I don't want to go too much in this to be repetitive as there's kind of some whatever presentation to, as a refresher. But the, kind of why we're here again is that after it was passed, there was some, some feedback from some citizens and short-term rental licensees and requests to the trustees and to the village board as to if there's going to be anything somewhat done or changes to be made regarding the short-term rental license. So there was a request last board meeting to have this brought back to, I guess, another evaluation and review this short-term rental licensing ordinance again to see if any, if everything is firm and in place or anything needs to be changed going forward in the future. So with that initially, I'll kind of just stop right now if there's any questions. Otherwise, I think Joel has some, a couple of points to highlight for the ordinance changes.
Yeah, and if it's okay with the board, I'll just go through a couple of quick things. And the reason for that is there were some individuals at the last meeting that kind of precipitated the interest in bringing this item back to tonight's meeting that were making statements that were contradictory to one another. And so I want to make sure that, that the board is fully understanding and aware of, of what the changes to the ordinance were that are impactful and what, what we heard from operators during those focus groups that we held after the ordinance was amended. So real quickly, state statutes dictates to all municipalities what we can and cannot prohibit as it relates to short-term rentals. So this, this is specifically within Wisconsin state statutes and these hold true for any municipality, not just the Village of Ashwabnan. So a couple of quick things. Under the statutes, a political subdivision such as the village may prohibit rentals for less than seven consecutive days. At present, our ordinance now requires that, or we prohibit rentals for less than seven consecutive days. There are exceptions to that, which I'll briefly touch on. We cannot prohibit rentals between seven and 29 days. So there was some conversation, well, could we prohibit a rental for 14 days? No, statutes do not permit us to regulate that. Statutes do allow us to limit the total number of days to 180 consecutive days, meaning if I rent on January 1, my first short-term rental, I now have 180 consecutive days from January 1 to use that property to rent. Our code currently for any new licensees does provide that. So you, you have 180 consecutive days. There are exceptions to that, which I'll highlight as well. Statutes do offer the opportunity for a municipality to require a permit. We do. So anytime somebody rents their place in the Village of Ashwabnan for more than 10 nights, they are required to have a local permit. That again is consistent with statutes. If an individual wanted to rent their property one time for six consecutive nights and that was the only time that they were going to rent it out over that year, they would not require a local permit from the village. They would however require a permit from the health department through the county. And that's required if you rent it one night, six nights, or 180 consecutive days over that period. So again, statutes dictate that. Couple of things that statutes do not do. They do not limit the number of short-term rental licensees that a municipality can issue or that the health department issues. So long as they meet the requirements of the code and they meet the requirements of licensure, they are able to obtain one. We cannot regulate short-term rental locations, licensed premises, based on zoning designation. So again, if you're in R1 district, that, that is permissible under statute. So some of the things that changed from when we adopted our code amendments, the last go at, I'll touch on again. So number one, our prior code limited the total number of rentals to 180 days. So under the prior code, you could not rent your property for more than 180 days. Consecutive was not a component of our prior code. The village board added the word consecutive days into it to limit the amount of rental time to that 180-day window versus 180 total days over a calendar year. In addition to that, they added the prohibition that you cannot rent it less than seven consecutive days. And again, that provision is, pertains to single and two-family dwellings. So again, prior to that, you could rent it for three consecutive days and that was permissible under our old code. Now, it must be seven consecutive days or no less than seven consecutive days. Now, those exceptions are here. So on the 180 days, if I'm a new licensee, I've never had a license with the village before, I apply, I receive my license, I must abide by that 180 consecutive day period. However, if I was a licensee prior to the change of this ordinance, so dating back to the July 1, 2022, to June 30, 2023 licensing period, I am exempted from that 180-day consecutive component. So I can rent it for 180 total days and it doesn't need to be within a consecutive window of 180 days, if that makes sense. This stays in place for any existing licensee of that licensing period so long as they maintain their license in good standing, they renew annually, and they haven't sold or transferred ownership of that property. Immediately if they've stopped licensing their property, their property is no longer in good standing, or they sell or transfer that property, that exception goes away and it becomes the 180 consecutive days. What we talked about also is, is making that seven consecutive day component or that minimum six consecutive nights, if you will, a component of the ordinance and that true, was in fact true. So any new licensee coming in must abide by that six consecutive night provision within our code. The exception is if I was a prior licensee dating to July 1, 2022 through June 30, 2023, I am exempted from that requirement for a period of one year or if that property doesn't renew their license, doesn't maintain good standing, or is transferred or sold. So that is really, from my understanding, the bulk of the concerns that we heard during the focus groups is that exception clause of that six consecutive night provision has a sunset clause within it. So it's only valid for one year. After a year is up, now it goes away and every licensee, regardless of whether you were previously licensed in that prior year, prior to ordinance amendment, has to abide by the six consecutive night provision. The other exception to that rule, and there is no sunset clause to this provision, is that an owner-occupied dwelling that has had an approved license under this section does not need to comply with that six-night minimum requirement. Owner-occupied means is that that property is the individual's primary place of residence and that they can, they can prove that primary residence through some type of means that would be approvable under, through community development. As an example, you provide your voter registration information or your tax return or something that declares that being their primary residence. The idea behind that is that we didn't necessarily want to enforce this for homes that are currently used for familial housing and aren't just simply short-term rental properties. Okay? And again, these are all consistent with statute. Now, just quickly touching on a few things, we added the definition of what owner-occupied is, what a primary residence stands for, how we define those and how we identify what those are during the application process. We added some additional regulations as related to building inspection components, particularly ground fault circuit interruptors, things of that nature. We eliminated the fees within the code and added them to a basic resolution. And then in addition to that, we also required a quarterly reporting component to the licensees. This was another area that we heard from, from, from the focus groups is that they felt that this may be too onerous for some operators. Our idea behind adding this component is that one, we're, we stay in communication now with that operator. We are able to identify through their self-reporting when their first rental period was to establish that 180-day consecutive window and then also verify through the reporting, self-reporting, whether or not they are meeting the six consecutive night or seven consecutive day component. Now, could people lie? Certainly, absolutely. But as we investigate and provide code enforcement, we will be utilizing those reports to validate whether or not they are being honest and truthful in their reporting and that they could be used as evidence in, as it relates to whether or not they maintain good standing on the license. And again, the purpose of this was to maintain and preserve existing familial housing. I think the pressure from the board at that time was, were, were the simple point of that many of these homes were being converted to short-term rentals. There weren't families and residents moving into these homes and providing kind of that neighborhood appeal, if you will, of having a vibrant neighborhood of neighbors enjoying each other throughout, throughout their existence, but then also some impacts to school districts and things of that nature as it related to declining enrollments and some of those other challenges. So with that, I'll stop. Those are the substantial changes to the ordinance. Tonight, it was intended to be just discussion for the board. No action has been identified on the agenda. So if the board does desire future action, it has advised the board, direct staff to bring forward whatever it is that you desire to make action on and we would bring that forward to a future board meeting for your review and consideration.
So as far as the, the minimum six night and the people that were. So, as far as the minimum six night, and the people that were grandfathered in for the one year, we, as a board, do we have that option coming up to extend that another year, or year by year? Is that what we're doing now? Do we have to take some kind? It sunsets if we do nothing, but do we have an option to say, let's go another twelve months?
I'll let Patrick answer that, but from an ordinance semantic standpoint, there's a date identified when that sunset clause occurs, and that, I believe, is July one, twenty-twenty-four. So, I'm assuming that it could be a simple amendment to the ordinance to adjust that date, or simply eliminate that date, or that sentence altogether, if that's desired.
Is that something that we want to do, though? We set that date in there solely so that the people already had pre-bookings didn't have to cancel them to gain bad reviews. That's why we left it in there. That ordinance, we put that in place knowing that this was going to happen. I guess for me, I don't know that I'm interested in adding that back in any longer. To be honest with you, if I was going to do anything with the exceptions, I would remove all of them except for the owner-occupied clause.
My opinion of it is the people that were grandfathered in, the few places that were, I would like to see this six consecutive nights, we eliminate the sunset altogether and just let these people go on with their businesses.
For me personally, especially with the pending legal action that could be out there from the Wisconsin Realtors Association, I wouldn't change anything. That's just my opinion on the legal action.
When we were going through this, you know, a little over years ago when we were doing it, one of the things we were trying to stop is the short-term rentals. Not that we want to eliminate them, we just wanted to slow down the licenses being taken out. So, Aaron, I guess I look to you. How is that number? Have we, has the ordinance done what we kind of were looking for it to do, was to stop that housing movement from residential to short-term rental?
Well, back in twenty-twenty-three, I believe we had upwards of, you know, it was eighty, eighty-three, somewhere around there. In twenty-twenty-four, we have seventy-four short-term rental licenses that expire at the end of June of this year. Now, we have started to get new licenses in, but usually we don't see those until probably mid-June, and even in some instances, July, August. Once Packer season hits, we certainly see them. So, there's a slow ramp up every year for licensing. So, there wasn't a whole lot of change between twenty-three and twenty-four. There was some reduction, but as far as what twenty-four to twenty-five would look like, I guess we'll see.
Okay. But it does sound to me like, okay, this maybe did, if nothing else, put the finger in the dyke. You know, whether it did or didn't, you can't really tell for sure, but in my, you know, just looking at the numbers, it looks to me like, yeah, maybe we did at least slow that So, I'm not sure that we really want to make any change at this point. I think we want to kind of leave it alone. I hear what you're saying, Chris, about the six days, but the gentleman that was before us last meeting was talking about the one hundred and eighty days. Well, I don't think he understood that he actually already had that. So, I'm not sure that the six days is going to make a big difference, and therefore, I would say, let's not make any change at this point, and see what happens with it. I don't see it being impacted.
Just based on what Aaron said, I'd argue that we've accomplished what we need to, and by forcing the originals to abide by the six consecutive night, I don't think that's going to, in my opinion, I don't think it's going to force any of them to close up shop.
So, you're proposing just the originals? The new ones still have to do the six nights, is what you're proposing? The new ones would still have to do?
Oh, yeah, absolutely. They knew what they were getting into.
Yeah.
You know, there's other things that, you know, as a village, people are grandfathered in, you know. One that comes to mind easily is garbage pickup. We've got businesses that get municipal garbage pickup at our expense because they're grandfathered in. We're not, you know, pulling the rug underneath those businesses.
Like I said, my personal opinion, I would just leave it alone because of the pending legal issue.
Well, something I have noticed, too, not that there's a lot of them, but I know there's a few of them out there, they're all for sale now, too. They've actually had a bad year this year. If you want to look at the days rented by some of them, I didn't see any action until maybe later in November through present. You know, there's a few things that came to town that brought them. I think it was the girls' basketball, and I think we had a couple of other small conventions in town that got a few, but they were, and I'm thinking they were priced probably more reasonable than some of the nicer homes, because they all, you know, really, and I've said it to a couple of people that call me, they really have nice homes. You know, we can't deny them of that, but they price as accordingly, and some of the nicer ones had bigger prices on it, and they didn't rent. So, but I agree. I think we should leave it as is.
I have to say that I, you know, Keith, Lucius, and Kurt Wires are here from the school district. If anybody wanted to open up the floor...
Make a motion, open the floor. Second.
Motion and a second, open the floor. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. If you would like to come up and state your name and address for the record, please.
Just what you guys needed was another meeting, right?
Yeah, exactly.
Thank you for sitting through this one.
We're all good. Kurt Wires, two zero seven nine Shady Lane, Ashwabanon, five four three one three.
Keith Lucius, twenty-nine forty-six Foxford Drive, five four three one three, Ashwabanon.
Thank you. I was, this, one of the big things for me all these years has been the fact that a lot of our affordable housing, now granted, all housing has gone up, but a lot of our affordable housing has really skyrocketed, and there's no way that somebody with, say, three kids could come and buy one of those homes to put their kids in our school district. I would assume that's kind of devastating for our school district.
Yeah, I'll let Keith speak to the financial side of it, but certainly, this has an impact more than just one year. This has an impact for the entire time that that family would have had kids in our school district for roughly thirteen years. So, I think, as you think about those expanding, I didn't hear that tonight, but, again, think about how that could expand and how that would take away some of the prices, especially in the Valley View neighborhood, which is closest to Lambeau Field, so...
So, when we talk financially, what does it mean to the district?
Keith, you want to pull that up?
Sure. Financially, what it means to the district, we're looking at, for a resident student per year, we get eleven thousand dollars worth of room for revenue limit, which is state aid and taxes combined. For a non-resident student, which we're using right now to fill those seats, as we've seen on enrollment decline, we're getting less than nine thousand. So, two thousand dollars less per student per year, but it's more than that because then you look at things, all of the federal grants that we get, every time we get assistance from the federal government, it's tied to our residents, not tied to those students. So, the difference is much larger than that when we look at things like our title grants and our flow-through, which is the special ed grants, things like that. So, it's significantly over three thousand dollars per student per year that the school district loses when we deal with an open enrollment student versus a resident. And we regularly hear from the open enrollment students, we want to move to Ashwabanon as soon as we can find a house, and they're just struggling to find housing, but they don't want to live in a rental neighbor, in an area where the short-term rentals are happening.
Keith, can I butt in there?
Sure.
What's the percentage of students from Ashwabanon versus out of Ashwabanon?
So, currently, we're a little more than two-thirds are Ashwabanon residents, and just under a third are outside of Ashwabanon coming in.
Okay, thank you.
Can you give us the numbers, Keith?
Sure. We're at about twenty-two hundred, just over twenty-two hundred residents, and about eleven hundred open enrollment.
Okay. So, we're thirty-three hundred in total. Okay. So, as far as that state funding, then, so expound to me a little bit, Keith, on the grants and that. So, when you put in, here's how many students we have, you're putting in twenty-two hundred, then, in order to get the grants and all that. You can't put in the thirty-three.
Right, exactly. So, all that, and a really good example of this is during COVID, the federal government had SER funds, and if you looked at the SER funds per student, we were in the bottom five percent of the state, if you use our total student count to come up with how much we got in SER funds. And that's because a third of our students, basically, their SER funds went to their resident district, where if they'd have been living here, we would have gotten basically fifty percent more SER funds, so federal money coming to our district instead of going to other districts. So, that's a good example. It happens with the Title I money, which is Math and Reading Intervention for Kids Who Are Struggling, and happens with the special ed money as well.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Does anybody have any other questions or comments for Keith or Kurt?
I would just like to say that we, as a board member that does have two kids in the school district, there is, I mean, I've had a meeting with you, and there is a struggle in the school district. I feel that this is a problem that the village of Ashwabanon itself bears. We have an amazing community, but we are lacking that, as you said, affordable housing, but also importantly, that desirable housing. There's not a lot of houses out there that hold four bedrooms, so that when you start taking houses away, when there's so few of them, and you start renting them out, it becomes more of a problem that we're literally, in my opinion, we cannot turn our back to. We need to do something to help our school district so that they can be successful. And I'm concerned that if we, you know, extend this six nights, okay, so now you're going to let five people continue to do this. That's five more houses that potentially could hold families to help offset their budget. And I understand that's not going to fix any of this right here, but we need to be doing small, little moves so that five houses, or five kids, turns into forty or fifty. We need to be doing something actively to help offset this and help stop it. That's just my opinion. I do appreciate you guys coming in, though.
Appreciate it, thank you. Yeah, and I would agree with you, Chris. I think one thing to remember, a lot of you are like me, you bought your house in Ashwabanon because of the school district, and it ties directly to our property values. The quality of the school district, the quality of the community are all tied to each other, and we appreciate your support and thinking about that impact.
Thank you.
I agree that affordability for housing is an issue, that we definitely need to, and we are addressing it. But I had an interesting conversation with a village resident who actually was employed here, and it opened my eyes, it was just a question that got me thinking. Is it our responsibility, as a municipality, how do I want to word this, to make sure our school system is put in the best financial position possible? Is that our responsibility?
So, personally, Chris, I would answer with yes. We have a very unique relationship with our school district. We plow their parking lots, we share the pool, we share the community center, we share the PAC. There's not a lot of municipal partnerships with their school district. So, yes, I would say it is our responsibility. Yes, I would say it is.
You know, I definitely have to agree with you, Mary, because when we went with the three referendums, the school was number one to create the theater that we've got. The school was in need of that, and I will, I'm the last one to say, spend a buck wherever it has to be, but when you toured what they had, it was needed. And that's a community effort to pass those referendums. We did it for the seniors, we made something nice for the aquatic center and the auditorium, which has been very good for the community. It's well-used by the community and the school. I don't have the numbers, but I know the school uses it a lot, and it's well-occupied by people watching their kids do whatever they do, along with the aquatic center, too. Rex, you can testify to the community center. It's booked all the time. You know, all three of them referendums did well for us. I didn't like to spend all the money to see it that way, but it proved out to be very successful. So, yes, community is important.
And I bring that up just because, and I argued against what this person said. I basically, in my heart, feel the same way you guys do. But I went home later that night, and I sat and thought about it, and I went, it just got me thinking, you know? Got my mind thinking a little bit, and that's why I asked this question.
I think the way I look at it, Chris, is they have to be hand in hand, because as your school district goes, if your school district stays successful, it continually brings in new residents, and because people want to be in there, they want it, you know, they want their kids to go to those schools. When that does that, that's bringing the right type of people into your community.
And I agree. You know, twenty-eight years ago, Michelle and I moved in because of the school system.
Yeah.
You know, I wasn't born and raised in Ashwabanon, and I was in another school district, and I, yeah, when my wife brought up, I went, yeah, let's get out of here. We're in Ashwabanon.
But that's okay, you married into it, that was all good.
Yeah, yeah. But I still think having this sunset clause is not going to, for the people that were already in, it's not going to force too many of those people out. That's going to come through over time, through selling, through passing the death in the family, whatever, you know, it's going to happen over time. I don't think this is going to, you know, having this sunset is going to expedite the situation for the people that were grandfathered in.
How many people are we talking about? How many of the eighty-five licenses are the grandfathered people?
Pardon?
Fifty-one.
Fifty-one. And that's the best information I have at hand. I don't have anything different than that, so we're going to go with that.
And how many do we have total?
We currently have licensed, expire in June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-four, we have seventy-four licensed.
So, you're talking the majority?
Right, so keep in mind, as Aaron said earlier, there's a potential impact that could happen later on into the season, just based on once someone could strategically start selling their property. So, not saying fifty-one is inaccurate or won't change, but saying that maybe based on history or statistics that it could increase closer we get to that, I guess, sunset clause date.
Right. No, I was just thinking, because if we're talking five homes are now not going to be available, but we're talking fifty-one homes, it just is a different way to think about it.
I look at it as every child we gain in our school district is one naturally full seat in that classroom, and that makes them guys be able to run a business that's actually naturally funded, and not trying to overinflate whatever you have to do to generate revenue. For me, again, I said it before, I'm fine with not reopening this for any more discussion for ordinances, but I will say, if we do, my vote will be to remove all exceptions, and there will be no, if it gets open.
You know, and we got to put it to bed sometime. We've been fooling around with this for a year, and I thought we did very well for the people that were in the business.
I agree.
I don't want to use the word business, I don't like to think they're running a business out of their house, but we got to stop.
I agree.
We got to put it to bed sometime. If we keep extending it, extending it, what are we gaining? More agreements.
So, what do we need to do tonight to...
If I may, I'm sorry to interrupt. So, the floor is currently open, so I guess if there aren't any other, and I want to be respectful if anybody else has time to, wants to...
Make the motion to close the floor.
No, I think we still...
One second, Jay. Sorry.
There's still people.
Unless there's any more discussion for.
For them.
School board members, I mean, just respectfully, if anyone else wants to make a comment, and then after that, I would encourage more discussion need be about the ordinance itself.
There we go, okay.
So are there any more?
Thank you.
Appreciate your time.
Thank you very much.
All right, I want to make one move on this. I don't mind opening it up to Florida, the people that want to talk about short-term rentals. But I want to put a time period of maximum fifteen minutes, we're gonna talk to them. We've talked long enough on this subject.
It's already open though Gary.
Pardon?
The floor is already opened.
I say, but I want them to have fifteen minutes total time. That's it. We've heard enough about this.
I would respectfully just ask that you reconsider, because we didn't put any timelines on when anyone else came in to speak. I apologize.
It's fine.
Okay. So.
I don't know.
State your name and address, your residence address for the record please.
Paul Steinbrecker, twelve eighty-one Canterbury Road. So when we met last year, the, what we got back from the board was, we are not looking to close down all these small businesses. That was the direct verbiage from this board and from the small meeting groups that we had. They said, we are not looking to shut you down. What we need to do is stop this growth. Well, the changes you made created that and it is working. Again, I was told last year we're sitting right around ninety. Again, we're sitting at seventy-four right now. We're going backwards. There's only fifty-one of us grandfathered in. That can never grow. It's only going backwards. We're only gonna get smaller in numbers. I know of five short-term rentals that are for sale right now. Three of them are grandfathered in. So the numbers will keep going down. Anybody that gets in this business in Ashwabanon right now is an idiot. You didn't do your homework. You will not succeed. I know people are chasing big dollars for the draft and whatnot. You're not gonna be successful. If is, you might try to make it through one year, but that's the longest you get. The properties that I have, I've had this property for over thirty years. My kids lived there for a little bit, but for the most part, it's been transitional people, two-bedroom place. No kids were going to Ashwabanon School. I mean, it's not going to make this major difference. Some of these other properties, you know, they'll get sold or whatever, but I don't see a big change happening to Ashwabanon School District. And again, it goes against what the board said last year. You're not, you said you weren't trying to shut us down. If you don't remove this sunset clause, you'll shut us all down. No one will make it through another year. I mean, you might make it through this next year, but that's it. You will not go any further. You know, you might make it through this Packer season and the draft, but you can't sustain a business with those regulations against you. So to say last year one thing and now change your tone, that doesn't make any sense to me. You're giving us two different answers. So all we're asking is the one thing, to change that sunset clause or remove it for that six-night thing. And you're not talking a big number of people. Again, it's fifty-one and I bet you, you're really probably talking about low forties, because I know enough people that are getting out of it. So I think it's owed to the ones like us that have been in this for like five years now. We take care of our property, we have nice properties, we have great guests, people that love coming here, and just to pull the rug out from under our feet after all our investments and everything, I don't think it's right. And I don't think it's gonna fix the things that you guys think it's going to fix. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Mark Dannon, eight twenty-five Spring Hills Court, actually Dupure resident. As if you guys recall from last year, I mentioned that I'm also a Town of Ledgeview Board Supervisor, and I also represent Powerhouse Properties. We manage short-term rentals in the Fox Valley. We have some in Ashwabanon in Green Bay. And I wanted just to echo what the gentleman before me had said, that the sentiment when this passed last year was one hundred percent that the board's intent was to not penalize or shut down the businesses or the investments that were made, but simply slow down the progression, slow down the houses being available for residents so they can have more homes in the area to live in. I can say without any sort of hesitation that that's working. One of the gentlemen, one of the board members mentioned that things aren't as busy this year and you can see that. A lot of these homes are for sale. That's happening all over the country. The short-term rental boom, so to speak, people really got into it during the pandemic, post-pandemic with the travel. There's too many of them. So I think what you're doing, even though I don't necessarily agree with it, I understand it and I understand your position, that you're trying to make it uncomfortable or unappealing for new homes to become investment properties, and I do understand that. Tonight's, the reason I came tonight was one hundred percent to talk about the six-night minimum for existing short-term rentals. I walked out of that small committee meeting last year as well, feeling exactly as that other gentleman, because the sentiments were, you know, hey guys, you know, thank you for coming, thank you for helping us kind of work this out. We want this to be a, you know, a small group solution and that next year, you know, we can revisit these things. We don't have to necessarily make a decision that's gonna be permanent. And we all took that as, all right, the sunset clause for that six-night minimum could absolutely be extended. And so it is disappointing to kind of hear a change in sentiment that we want to now just kind of impact all of the existing operators as well. So I ask you to kindly consider that. I don't believe that the fifty-one that are here today are gonna have any sort of impact whatsoever on the bigger picture solution, Chris, that you're actually talking about. I think what you've already done is going to do that, but I do kindly ask you to please consider eliminating the six-night minimum for those of us with existing properties that are in good standing, getting these license, taking care of these properties, housing travelers as they come in even for a weekend. If you guys remember what I told you last year, we don't do it for the Packer season. We're not doing this for the draft. Our houses house people that come in for a couple nights all the time. They're busy. So we don't make a big deal about the Packer season. We've got people coming, visiting family here for a funeral, here for a wedding. So they're coming for a couple of nights. If they can't do that, we've just lost an opportunity to bring people to Ashwabanon. So, and I don't think that's right. So thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, anybody else? Okay, need a motion to close the floor?
Motion to close the floor.
Okay.
Motion and a second to close the floor. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed. Motion carried. Okay, the floor is closed. I still am, I'm going to, my vote would be to just leave it the way it is because of the pending legal issue. I don't want to open the ordinance, but discussion, if anybody has. I'm sorry?
Can I, you or Patrick, the pending legal issue, when, do you have any idea when that would be finalized or how that's moving through to give us kind of timeline on that?
The board voted to deny the claim a few months ago, so as of right now, we're waiting to see if the claim has been filed with the circuit court or not. Or, excuse me, the next step would be to take this to the circuit court because the claim was officially denied. So there's still, I think it's ninety days left, or sixty.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, what's your druthers?
Well, was this kind of discussion only or were we?
Discussion only unless you want to make a motion to.
I don't think, well.
Rediscuss the.
As of right now, unless there's a change to the ordinance, there wouldn't necessarily be anything. It'd be discussion only. The only direction, as Joel said earlier, is there'd be a motion and that would be a direction of staff to amend the ordinance and that we'd take it back at a different meeting to bring it forth at official ordinance amending the, okay, or, excuse me, an ordinance amending the short-term rental licensing, I don't know, any issues or sections.
So I was the one who kind of put in that sunset clause to see how it was gonna work. And it does appear to be working. And I do appreciate like what Gary said, okay, you know, how much are you gonna keep extending it, but you know what? We've said that, we're saying that it worked and we have a one-year window that we've looked at. So do we push that out one more rental cycle and say, all right, let's see what the number looks like next year? Then we'll know absolutely for sure, then we'll have two years' worth of evidence to tell us whether it's really, really doing what we think it is. And I do agree with you, I think that bubble is busted with the short-term rentals. I agree. I think, so I think that might be naturally happening. So maybe all we do is we just change that date. Push it a year and see what happens the next rent, and we don't do anything else. We just leave it the way it is. Just say, the existing ones, just wait another year. And then let's come back and revisit it then. There's no reason we can't do that. And Patrick, correct me if I'm wrong, I don't think that would impact our position on the litigation either, correct?
I guess it's kind of a separate issue, but extending the year to twenty twenty-five season wouldn't, no, not necessarily impact that decision.
Yeah, I think that's, I think that's reasonable, what you're asking.
I, Chris, what do you think?
I do not hold that same thought process.
I know, that's why I asked. You know, I gotta kind of agree with you on what you said, Jay. But I'm gonna say this, if we extend it for one year, next year I'm voting against it.
Yep. I absolutely would agree. We get there and we find out.
Because of, we got some numbers to play with.
Correct.
But one year is my limit.
I'm not, go ahead.
One year. I'm sorry Chris, or Kelly. If we extend it one year, I agree with Jay, you know, it's given us another year of data to look into. And Patrick just said it won't necessarily affect the litigation, the possible litigation. So maybe I'd make a motion to bring it back to the next village board meeting with staff to look into those two items and bring something back that we can vote on.
That's what I was gonna say. I was gonna say, I'm not technically opposed to extending it for a year. I'm just wondering if there is a leverage position we're losing if we do it now before the expiration of the time period they have to sue. Do you want to see what they're gonna do before we start giving them stuff?
Well, I guess. I want to make this one more comment. At least it gives these guys time with the draft.
Right.
Yeah.
You know, if we're gonna extend this for another meeting, the next meeting will say, well, let's do this and that'll be another meeting pretty soon. Where are we?
Yeah, and I'm not, I'm definitely not proposing that. I'm just saying, all right, let's get another year's worth of data. I don't know. So I fully, I fully understand Chris's position. I get it.
I agree with him a hundred percent.
And I don't disagree because those two guys I very much want to support.
So just to interject here, not to stymie any further discussion, but it sounds like based on what I'm hearing, there is a majority of the board at present that would prefer to have this item brought forward to the next village board meeting with just the section related to the code that provides the exception with the sunset clause at present that expires July one, twenty twenty-four. So if that is the desire of the board, then that would be your motion is to direct staff to prepare an amendment to the ordinance to that section, eliminating that sunset clause or extending that sunset clause to July one, twenty twenty-five.
I'll make the motion just to.
I would, I would like to see all the exemptions up for discussion, if that's the direction we're going.
I just want to caution the board, I guess, a little bit that what's been stated, why the ordinance was passed was, as Joel said, to preserve and maintain the existing familial housing. That's the current reason and the purpose of the ordinance amendments and the changes to it. I, can the board certainly extend it out to twenty twenty-five? Sure. As long as, as I said earlier, there's a rational basis for it, okay. But I just want to caution the board that the main concerns that the board is hearing are eliminating it altogether. So are we gonna be, is the board gonna be hearing recycling of these same complaints and issues next year? When there's already been comments made by, I guess Gary, that you're automatically going to deny it coming next year. So I just, I want to caution the board that you might be hearing the same concerns in the foreseeable future, because at this point, it's kind of all or nothing. Can you do it? Sure. But the concerns that people are giving to the board is, why extend it when it's just gonna be another sunset clause? Why three, why not, why one year, why not three years, why not five years? And I get it, they see that it's the draft and it's more statistics, but it doesn't eliminate the problem of, the issue is, you're still hurting the existing businesses that are already grandfathered in. So I'm just cautioning the board, not saying, advising one way or the other, but yes, you can do it, but it's not gonna stop the issue of, why are you only extending it one year, if that makes sense?
I already know I'm voting next year.
Okay, and just to.
I'm warning all of you.
Just to assist and keep this moving along, I believe Jay had made a motion. Now we did, I think, have an opportunity for that second, but just to help kind of continue that, settle along.
Is there a second on Jay's motion?
Second.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. To bring back the grandfathering of the six-night minimum, correct?
Yep, and to assist that conversation, because I know Chris had mentioned right before the second of that motion, that he'd certainly support it, but he wants more than just that singular exception or section of the code to be brought back, that any of the sections that include those exceptions or sunset provisions be brought back. If that is desired, then there would need be an amendment to the original motion that Jay had made. Jay had made his motion prior to Chris making that statement, so I'm just trying to keep things clean from a Roberts rules board.
Do you want to amend that Jay?
No, I think I'll leave it the way it is, the way I'd stated it.
Okay, do you want to, that's all we're gonna vote on then? Okay. Does everybody understand what we're voting on?
We're just voting on it to extend it for a year.
No, we're, well, we're voting on bringing it back.
In a year.
So Gary, what you're voting on is to direct staff to bring to you next month an amended ordinance that would extend, what we would essentially be doing based on Jay's motion, is only bringing that section of the code that pertains to the sunset clause for the six-night minimum. We would not be bringing back the entire ordinance or other sections of the ordinance, only that provision.
Just the sunset.
Just the six-night minimum on the sunset.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay, everybody understands that?
Yes.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Hell.
No. Okay. Be back next month. Okay. Ten H, consider discuss act on bid award for the twenty twenty-four Batuminus Planning and Paving Contract. Steve Burr.
The item before you tonight is our annual road resurfacing contract. Every year we take a look at, you know, past P A S R ratings. We have a five-year paving plan that we review every year. And the list included in the packet here is based on that plan and also estimated quantities and estimated contract value. Back on May fourteenth, we opened bids. We had two pre-qualified and approved bidders and we received two bids with Northeast Asphalt submitting the lowest responsible bid in the amount of one million, one hundred ninety-eight thousand, one hundred eighty-two dollars. You know, looking at the funding for that, the twenty twenty-four budget amount was seven hundred twenty-five thousand. Additional U R P A funding for the trail and T I D five funds would cover this. Any questions at all?
No.
I don't see nothing.
Not for me.
I'd make a motion to approve the contract to North. I'd make a motion to approve the contract to Northeast Asphalt in the amount of $1,198,182.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to accept the contract of $1,198,182 to Northeast Asphalt. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you. Uh, I, consider discuss act on the bid award for the Timber Lane culvert replacement. Steve Burr.
Yep, this item is, uh, the Timber Lane culvert that's in the conservancy area, um, just, uh, between, I guess, Ken Drive and Oak Crest Drive. The culvert is in definitely in bad shape. Brian and I have looked at it a few times. Um, so we worked with McMahon Associates, did some, uh, design on it. And we're looking to replace that culvert this summer um, with a equivalent-sized culvert, going from a corrugated metal culvert to a concrete culvert. Uh, we put up for bids, um, back in in early in early May, received six bids on it this time um, with a low bid of $302,528 to a high of $423,465.25. The low, uh, responsible bid, um, was advanced construction. And we've worked with, uh, Advance and past projects and, um, have don't have any qualms of working with them. Um, funding for this, uh, project would be through the Stormar Utility. Couple of things to note. You know, we're looking to, you know, get this project completed sometime, um, late summer, but, uh, prior to school starting um, in the fall, uh, we'd be shutting the road down just to get that culvert in place. We'll be contacting the nearby, um, adjacent property owners, but also putting up message boards so that the full neighborhoods uh, understand the road will be closed down for, you know, four to six weeks. So I guess with that, um, the bid amount of 302,528 by Advanced Construction, uh, staff, uh, recommends that contract be awarded to them.
Okay. Anybody have a motion?
I'll move to, uh, award the contract for the replacement of culvert on Timber Lane to Advanced Construction, total of $302,528.
I'll second.
Motion and a second to award the replacement project to Advanced Construction for $302,528. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you. 10J, consider discuss act on the bid award for the 2024 Traffic Signal Replacement. Brian Rickert.
All right, so I'll get started on this one. Um, this project itself did follow the similar bid schedule as the previous two projects, so we placed it out to bid uh, in the end of April, beginning of May, uh, on following that, uh, May 16th, we opened up the bids for the project. We did ultimately only receive two bids for the project, which is pretty normal and expected for this scope of work. Uh, the bids varied between 101,000 and 109,000. Um, with that, I should note that we did have an alternative, uh, portion of this project. The alternative to this project included removing the traffic signals on Homegrown and the fire station entrance. Um, so you guys may be aware, there's that yellow flashing sign, um, at that intersection. Um, it has not been operational for the last few years. Uh, we have worked with public safety to see if that's something that we wanna keep operational or if it is beneficial. Um, based on feedback from chief and deputy chief, um, they do not use it. They do not feel as though it's needed. So their alternative is to actually remove that traffic signal as it does not follow, um, normal traffic standards either. Um, and essentially, um, replace three exist existing traffic control cabinets. So the three existing traffic control cabinets are is part of the base bid. The alternate just includes removing the traffic signal at the fire station entrance. So staff is recommending to approve, uh, with the alternative to remove the traffic signal, uh, here at the fire station and then also award the base bid to Elm Star Construction.
Okay, anybody wanna make a motion?
I'll make a motion to award the 2024 Traffic Signal Replacement Contract with alternative to Elm Star Electric Corporation, the amount of $101,101,630.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to award the contract for the signal replacement to Elm Star Electric with the alternative in the amount of $101,630 and 30 cents. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Okay, 10K, report on financial funds. Greg Wenhols.
All right, my turn. Uh, Gary, I'll try to keep this under 30 minutes for you.
Please.
Just kidding. So, uh, what I wanna do is just really briefly go over the 2023, uh, financials for the village. The audit is, in all intents and purposes, done doing final, uh, reporting and review of all the financials, but at this point, there'll be no more journal entries or anything like that. So in short, the end, the the general fund, I'll focus mostly on that. Uh, we ended 2023, a year with a final excess of $757,157.67. The largest primary reason for that was interest income, which was well above budget. Uh, rates were were really high. Uh, so it was good, really good thing. Overall, um, village operations, winners planned, there's always some puts and takes here and there, and they kind of wash themselves out through the process, but the village is is in a very good, strong, uh, financial position from a general fund standpoint. And, you know, ending that year with that surplus, the next agenda item will be talking about what I wanna, what we wanna do with those funds. If I wanna move those. Uh, we always like to end the year with a with a zero growth if we can. We budget, uh, zero growth budget, meaning we don't add to our fund balance. But part of that process is looking at the end of the year, you know, maintaining our fund balance, matching our policy. So overall, the general fund, like I said, puts and takes here and there, but operationally, we're still covering all the services we wanna do. Uh, and didn't have any issues with any of that. I did also include other, all the other capital project funds and special revenue funds and our internal service funds, our health dental and equipment replacement fund, equipment replacement being all of our vehicles. All of those funds have very strong, healthy fund balances as well. They're all kept separate, independent of the general fund so that they're able to address any issues within themselves. For example, the vehicle fund, if if something were to happen to a fire truck, for example, we have money there available to address that need versus having to take from the general fund or borrow. So all these other capital project funds, again, doing well, kind of following what was budgeted and planned. So overall, financially, uh, next next month, the auditors will be here to present, uh, the 2023 audit. And I think they'll, you'll hear the the similar message that we're doing very well financially. So with that said, the general fund, um, I don't know if you have any questions, any concerns? Um, I will, again, all the next agenda, and I'll talk about what we wanna do with those funds and what we're proposing.
Okay, any questions?
Greg will be going through this again with the, uh, audit.
Yeah, he won't get into the details of of this fund. He'll talk at more even a little bit higher level. And then they'll talk about what they do during the audit and any findings that they have and that whole process, very similar to years past, but um, always good information.
Okay. Very good. You kept it short.
Okay. Any questions for Greg about that? Or it's information only? We'll move on to the next item. 10L, consider discuss act on 2023 general fund transfer of excess funds.
So as I mentioned, we, you know, had excess funds in the general fund of over 757,000. Uh, two things we'd like to do, propose for that. Um, if you recall last year, about mid-year, and it was an auditor recommendation coming out of 2022 was to, we had what was called the Employee Retirement Fund. It was a separate fund. Um, but from a financial perspective, the audit will always merge those two funds. And so when you're looking at budget versus actual financial reports, it can get a little confusing. So in lieu of a separate fund, we created a reserve balance within our general fund. And it's a restricted account, meaning once money is put in there, the board approves money into there, it cannot be used for any other purpose. It's restricted specifically for its intended purpose. While we have, um, that fund, or that those dollars are always depleting as people are retiring. Um, that fund addresses employee retirement, so they're, um, they have earned, um, accrual balances and they have the right to pay them out upon retirement. And so it's just a constant need, a constant flow. We anticipate, uh, we already know of about four or five retirements in the 2024 calendar year. So that'll draw some funds. So we're proposing of them of that excess funds is to put $400,000 into that fund to address future, um, future retirement needs. And then the remaining funds, 357,157,67, uh, we would like to just propose that we move it over into the Village Building Fund. There is a lot of potential future costs with the Village Building Fund. In fact, we're currently waiting upon some bids for some work to be done on, uh, a spatial study and other studies for the village hall, looking at our maintenance needs. Um, so it it's potentially money that could be used for that purpose. Uh, it also just puts it to the side. It could be repurposed in the future. If the board determined that, hey, let's pull something out of that for some other purpose, you always have the right to do that. And those funds aren't, it it would still be a a motion or action by staff to come to the board and explain the use of those funds, whether that's through the budget process or through, um, some bids or proposals that come in. So that Village Building Fund isn't just used randomly. Those would be projects that are presented or or approved through the budget process. So that would be the two, uh, uses of the excess funds, retirements, and then put in the Village Building Fund for future capital project needs. All of that would then, at the end of the day, uh, I go through a process at the end of the year, and we we discuss internally, and talk with the auditors to make sure that we're following our fund balance policy. Um, and so currently, our fund balance with these recommendations, we would have our 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 stated policy is that our fund balance would be not less than 20%, but not more than 30% of the next year's budgeted expenditures. So in this case, we'd have to end the 2023 year having that range, 20 to 30% of 2024's budgeted, uh, general fund expenditures. And currently, uh, if we ended this way, we would be sitting at a fund balance of 27%, which is a very healthy, strong fund balance. So that that's, uh, what I have. So my recommendation, again, transfer 400,000 to the Employee Retirement Reserve Account and transfer the remaining 357,157,67 to the Village Building Fund for future capital project needs.
And if I recall, Greg, your percentage you typically target is 25?
Correct.
Okay, any questions, or I'll entertain a mo- motion?
Everything you tell me, Greg, I gotta believe. So I'll approve the transfer of $400,000 to the Employment Retirement Reserve Account and transfer of $357,157.67.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to transfer $400,000 to the Employee Retirement Reserve Account and $357,157.67 from the general fund to the Village Building Fund. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you. 10M, consider discuss act on Element Way Mini Park Concept Plan. Rex.
All right, you've got a couple of documents in your packet, uh, that show the site, uh, on Element Way um, of the proposed mini park. This is probably one of the more fun things as a parking director that we get to do in those positions is actually have a chance to design something. Because so many times when you come on board, you know, your your park system's kind of already set. But especially for a community like Ashwabon that doesn't have a lot of area to expand. But we are looking at the mini park. Um, so we are, we've been working with Rettler. Uh, we probably had about at least three or four different gore rounds with them. Uh, and this is the design that we came up with that we felt would certainly be appropriate and would be appreciated by the residents in that area. The park is smaller in size, 0.43 acres, so there's only certain amount of things that can be done there. We've tried to incorporate the main thing, which is the playground, a little bit of green space, seating areas, gathering areas, um, as well as some permanent, um, bag areas, uh, with the population around there being basically young professionals in the 20 and 30-year-old category, um, which is very popular for them. Um, I guess rather than go through everything, I I I wanna say this did go to Park Board. It was approved unanimously with a couple, uh, additions, which were additional lighting on the backside of the playground, which you see on this map, um, as well as an expanded, um, impervious surface area around number 17, which was some seating, uh, which we can put additional seating on. Um, so those were the main things. Um, and I'm opening it up, uh, for questions at this time. If you've got anything you'd like to ask. Uh, what I would like, if if everyone is good with this, then is to go ahead, uh, and open this up for, work with Rettler on on bidding it out. We are looking at trying to do as much work as possible, um, with our own staff on this. Uh, we plan on using a fair amount of park development funding, um, as well as some potential TID funding on this as well. Um, but I think our the cost right now per Rettler, if we weren't to do much of anything on our own, is around 375,000. We wanna bring that down under 300,000 as much as we can by doing a lot of this in-house, ordering some of the own our own equipment that we can um, and trying to minimize the amount of work that that we have to bid out. Um, park staff is aware of this. We've already started to take down the southern fence line, um, of the park, clear out the buckthorn um, uh, that was growing through the fence and had destroyed the fence. So we already are doing some of that own work, uh, uh, on our own. Um, in fact, in the next week or two, we'll probably be working, taking one of the Public Works payloaders and, uh, lifting up, uh, the asphalt driveway that's currently in place from the previous, um, house structure that was on that site. So we're trying to minimize, again, any kind of contracted cost and and just getting feedback uh, from the board tonight, if if you're all okay with the design, or if you've got any questions or concerns. Um, now's the time to to bring them up.
Rex, the question, Rex, the question, I got that four-foot decorative fence. That's all along the side of that apartment building there?
That that would be where the current, uh, chain link fence is.
Correct. Okay, but you're replacing that with a decorative fence?
Yes, and and I would say if i- i- as a like example, if you go out to the Ashwabon Sports Complex, there's a a metal fence, um, along the east side of the soccer fields, right between the soccer, right in front of the bleachers, basically. Between the bleachers and the concession stand out at the sports complex. It is, it just would look a lot better. We don't know what is going to be going in to the west or to the south. Um, and we feel that the park should be sectioned off, per se.
I agree. That's why I'm asking the question. It should be protected.
Yep.
Good, okay.
Okay, does anybody have comments or a motion or?
Rex, can you remind me what, I know we talked, you're gonna be putting a slab in for possibly a portable bathroom. Where did we end on that discussion?
Uh, on the map, it's number 14.
But I but I mean, as far as, we're just putting a slab in right now. We're not putting anything on there.
We're just putting a slab down there. We're gonna wait and see of whether we need a restroom or not. We we certainly think we will probably need one during the Packer season, similar to how we have a a porta potty at Canterbury and um, uh, Skyline, uh, throughout the whole, actually through early January, mid-January. So we, with the proximity, we think we do be doing the same thing here.
You know, I I, uh, had you reported for a bathroom at Skyline, and I found out the park department put it there. Wasn't one of them obscene porta potties that I dislike.
Sorry, Gary. People who use it are happy with it.
I'm sure they are.
It's much better than just peeing in the park.
Okay.
Rex, I think this looks really good. I I'm disappointed there's no pickleball courts or baseball diamonds in it, but, uh, I realize it's pretty small, so, uh, but I think it looks really great. I think it'll be a great addition to the area. So I would, uh, recommend the, to approve, uh, to proceed with, uh, design uh, with Rettler for the Element Way Mini Park Concept Plan.
I'll second that.
Okay.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to proceed with the Element Way Mini Park Concept Plan with Rettler and send it out for bid. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Items for next agenda. Okay, if you have anything, call the office. They'll get it put on the on the next agenda. Number 12, closed session items. During the meeting, the village board of the village of Ashwabon may convene into closed session pursuant to A, B, C, D, and E. I need a motion to go into closed session.
Motion go on closed session?
Second.
Uh, roll call, please.
Can I ask who the second was? I didn't hear that.
Second.
Thank you.
Hey, buddy.
Okay. Okay. President Kardowski.
Yes.
Trustee Paul. Gary. Trustee Paul.
Trustee Paul.
Yes, yes, yes.
Trustee Atkinson.
Yes.
Trustee Zerbal.
Yes.
Trustee Service.
Yes.
Trustee Krieger.
Yes.
And Trustee Fluky is remote, so she cannot be in closed session.
You're right. Good night, everybody.
We're in closed session. Good night, Tracy.
Good night.